Welcome councillors, I open the ordinary council meeting on the 17th of November 2020 at 6:08pm. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that the last week, 8th to the 15th of November 2020 was NADOC Week. The theme was Always Was, Always Will Be and recognise the First Nations people who occupied and cared for this continent over 65,000 years. Always Was, Always Will Be encourages Australians to celebrate that we have the oldest continuing cultures on the planet. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people were Australia's first explorers, first navigators, first engineers, first farmers, first botanists, first scientists, first diplomats, first astronomers and first artists. It is proud to support the community in the number of events to celebrate NADOC Week. I would like to thank council staff who have assisted in the community in celebrating NADOC Week this year. And now councillor Sinott, I'd like councillor Hamilton to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly proceed to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Randwick and Australia. Amen.
Councillor Shurik to read the acknowledgement.
I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Vidicul and Gadigal peoples who occupied the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders past and present and to Aboriginal people in attendance today, always was, always will be.
Thank you councillor Shurik. So councillors, I call for apologies or leave of absence.
Councillor Bowen will be running late.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Can I have a mover? Councillor Stravinos and a second please and councillor Oxford to second it. Can I have confirmation of minutes, the ordinary council meeting on the 27th of October 2020? Can I have someone move and second the minutes? Councillor Stravinos moved it and seconded councillor May.
Sorry, didn't say my name, just May.
Could I please have councillors, could I please have declarations of pecuniary and non pecuniary interests? Councillor Stravinos.
Thank you Mr Mayor, in relation to CS5720, the confidential director of city services report, I have to declare a non-significant pecuniary interest in that I am a member of Des Renford Leisure Centre. I'm a regular gym goer, but I will be voting on the matter tonight. Thank you.
Any further councillors thing?
Oh, thank you Mr Mayor, consistent with previous declaration, I declare a non pecuniary significant interest on item NR3/20, being the recession motion on the draft K2K DCP as I own dwelling within the Rainbow Street council owned property 200 metres from where I live. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Singh, any further declarations? Move on. So now I'd like to address the council by the members of the public, so there's a privacy warning. In respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for purposes of clause 5.20-5.23 of council's code of meeting practice. Audio/video recording of meetings is prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from this meeting for using or having used an audio or video recorder without the express authority of council. Announcement to the speakers tonight, all members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of three minutes to put their case forward and an extension of one minute from the mayor. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each submission. So the first person we have speaking tonight is CS56/20, Sturt Street Crossing Pedestrian Safety Project and speaking against is Ms Diane Nazarov.
Thank you. So I'm speaking against the recommendation that council consider the inclusion of the new Sturt Street pedestrian crossing project as a safety project priority in the 2021-22 Capital Works Programme as it needs to be installed now, not next year or the year after that. I and the more than 150 parents from three nearby schools who've already signed the change.org petition in support of the crossing, which is up on the screen, do not want this pedestrian crossing delayed any further. We're very concerned that a child will be killed on this road. The next screen shows a letter from the Rainbow Street Public School PNC in support of installing this crossing as a priority in this year's budget. The PNC president says he witnessed a near miss of a Randwick Girls High School student at the four-way intersection only this morning. Just to give you an idea of how busy the intersection is, here's some video of the area where the crossing will be eventually installed. If I could just go to the next screen, it was taken 20 minutes prior to the start of school this morning. If you just press play. No, might come back to that one. So parents and children at three nearby schools have already waited three years for this crossing, please don't make us wait another year or two. Council has known since August 2017 that there's been a big increase in vehicle traffic on Sturt Street as that's when they did a traffic survey which showed that traffic numbers were much higher and would meet the vehicle requirement for a pedestrian crossing on Sturt Street, that's more than three years ago. Remember this increase in traffic is because of the installation of lights at the Kingsford Roundabout for the light rail and the changes in traffic conditions there, particularly as a result of the no right turn from Anzac Parade to Rainbow Street. Those changes occurred in June 2017, almost three and a half years ago. I began contacting the council about pedestrian safety issues in Sturt Street in February 2018, well before the cycle path was considered by council. In February 2018, a transport engineer with the council confirmed that vehicle traffic had increased and that it will be her recommendation to provide a raised crossing as a priority. She also wrote that council would be coordinating the pedestrian crossing with the bicycle route project, however, the pedestrian crossing would be a separate project at this stage. Council deferred the crossing at the August 2018 Traffic Committee and approved it at the Traffic Committee meeting in October 2018. If I could just show the screenshot of that traffic committee, there's the traffic from this morning. So it's about 12 cars in 20 seconds. But the next screenshot shows, and the next one after that, shows that the traffic, the pedestrian crossing will be constructed in October 2018. So this is not a new project as described in tonight's business papers, it is a project that has been continually shelved for other projects. There've been a number of delays, Ausgrid works a redesign, the cycle path plans and a repositioning of the project. This crossing, one of three recommended for that stretch of Sturt Street, was never originally meant to be built part of the bike path. It was meant to be built as a consequence of the traffic changes due to the construction of the light rail in June 2017. I cited a detailed design of the Sturt Street.
That's, I know there was a delay, so that's three minutes I've allowed, but you've got one more, one more minute anyway.
So I cited a detailed design of the Sturt Street pedestrian crossing at the October 23 meeting with council and school reps. So doesn't this mean there are only two steps left in the process to get this crossing installed? The road safety audit and hiring the contractor to build it. If children's safety really is a priority of this council, then I urge you not to delay this crossing any further, it really is well overdue. Thank you.
Are you willing to take any questions, Mrs Nazarov please? Councillors, any questions for Ms Nazarov?
Thank you for coming to the meeting, I mean, can you give the councillors a sort of a rough idea of the sort of amount of children that are kind of crossing in that area in the morning and afternoon?
Like I said in the speech, it really is, there's high school students that travel down that way, down Patton Street, on the way to the Ariluan Street bus stop. And I see them there every morning, loads of boys, loads of Randwick girls as well. And then obviously our own children going to Rainbow Street Public School. So we have 400 students at our school, it's just been rebuilt for a capacity of 1,000. I think there's about 670 at Randwick Boys and I think Randwick Girls is around 950. So a good part of that would come from that, along that route.
Any further questions councillors? No, thank you Mrs Nazarov.
Thank you.
Next we have NM73/20, notice the motion. So councillors, I call for apologies or leave of absence.
Um councillor Bowen will be running late.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Can I have a mover? Councillor Stravinos and a second please and councillor Luxford to second it. Uh can I have a confirmation of minutes? The ordinary council meeting on the twenty seventh of October twenty twenty. Can I have someone move and second the minutes? Councillor Stravinos moved it and seconded, councillor.
Me, me.
Oh, they're sorry, councillor Shurik.
Sorry, didn't say my name, just me.
Sorry. Um could I please have councillors, could I please have declarations of pecuniary and non pecuniary interests? Councillor Stravinos.
Uh thank you, Mr Mayor. In relation to uh CS fifty seven twenty, the confidential director, uh director of city services report, uh I have to declare a uh non significant pecuniary interest in that I am a member of Des Renford Leisure Centre, I'm a regular gym goer, but I will be voting on the matter tonight. Thank you.
Any further councillors thing?
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. Consistent with previous declaration, I declare a non pecuniary significant interest on item NR three slash twenty being the rescission motion on the draft K two K D C P as our own uh dwelling within the Rainbow Street council owned property uh two hundred metres from where I live. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Singh. Any further declarations? Move on. Um so now I'd like to address the council by the members of the public. So there's a privacy warning. In respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for purposes of clause five point two zero dash five point two three of council's code of meeting practice. Audio video recording of meetings is prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from this meeting for using or having used an audio or video recorder without the express authority of council. Announcement to the speakers tonight, all members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of three minutes to put their case forward and an extension of one minute from the uh from the mayor. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each submission. So the first person we have speaking tonight is CS fifty six slash twenty, Sturt Street Crossing Pedestrian Safety Project and speaking against is Ms Diane Nazaroff.
Thank you. So I'm speaking against the recommendation that council consider the inclusion of the new Sturt Street pedestrian crossing project as a safety project priority in the two thousand and twenty one twenty two Capital Works Programme as it needs to be installed now, not next year or the year after that. I and the more than hundred fifty parents from three nearby schools who've already signed the change dot org petition in support of the crossing, which is up on the screen, do not want this pedestrian crossing delayed any further. We're very concerned that a child will be killed on this road. The next screen shows a letter from the Rainbow Street Public School P and C in support of this um installing this crossity as a crossing as a priority in this year's budget. The P and C president says he witnessed a near miss of a Randwick Girls High School student at the four way intersection only this morning. Just to give you an idea of how busy the intersection is, here's some video of the area where the crossing will be eventually installed. If I could just go to the next screen, it was taken twenty minutes prior to the start of school this morning. If you just press play. No, might come back to that one. So parents and children at three nearby schools have already waited three years for this crossing. Please don't make us wait another year or two. Council has known since August two thousand and seventeen that there's been a big increase in vehicle traffic on Sturt Street as that's when they did a traffic survey which showed that traffic numbers were much higher and would meet the vehicle requirement for a pedestrian crossing on Sturt Street. That's more than three years ago. Remember, this increase in traffic is because of the installation of lights at the Kingsford Roundabout for the light rail and the changes in traffic conditions there, particularly as a result of the no right turn from Anzac Parade to Rainbow Street. Those changes occurred in June two thousand and seventeen, almost three and a half years ago. I began contacting the council about pedestrian safety issues in Sturt Street in February two thousand and eighteen, well before the cycle path was considered by council. In February two thousand and eighteen, a transport engineer with the council confirmed that vehicle traffic had increased and that it will be her recommendation to provide a raised crossing as a priority. She also wrote that council would be coordinating the pedestrian crossing with the bicycle bicycle route project, however, the pedestrian crossing would be a separate project at this stage. Council deferred the crossing at the August two thousand and eighteen Traffic Committee and approved it at the Traffic Committee meeting in October two thousand and eighteen. If I could just show the screenshot of that traffic committee, there's the traffic from this morning. So it's about twelve cars in twenty seconds. But the next screenshot shows the and the next one after that shows that the traffic, the pedestrian crossing will be constructed in October two thousand and eighteen. Uh so this is not a new project as described in tonight's business papers. It is a project that has been continually shelved for other projects. There've been a number of delays, Ausgrid works, a redesign, the cycle path plans and a repositioning of the project. This this crossing, one of three recommended for that stretch of Sturt Street, was never originally meant to be bu- built part of the bike plan, bike path. It was meant to be built as a consequence of the traffic changes due to the construction of the light rail in June two thousand and seventeen. I cited a detailed design of the Sturt Street.
That's, I know there was a delay, so that's three minutes I've allowed, but you've got one more, one more minute anyway.
So I cited a detailed design of the Sturt Street pedestrian crossing at the October twenty three meeting with council and school reps. So doesn't this mean there are only two steps left in the process to get this crossing installed? The the road safety audit and hiring the contractor to build it. If children's safety really is a priority of this council, then I urge you not to delay this crossing any further. It really is well overdue. Thank you.
Um are you willing to take any questions, Miss Nazaroff, please? Councillors, any questions for Ms Nazaroff?
Um thank you for coming to the meeting. I mean, can you give the councillors a sort of a rough idea of the uh sort of amount of children that are kind of crossing in that area in the morning and afternoon?
Like I said in the speech, it really is, there's high school students that travel down that way, down Patton Street on the way to the Ariluan Street uh bus stop. Um and I see them there every morning, loads of boys, loads of uh Randwick girls as well. And then obviously our own children going to Rainbow Street Public School. So we have four hundred students at our school. It's going, it's just been rebuilt for a capacity of a thousand. I think there's about six seventy at Randwick Boys and I think Randwick Girls is around nine fifty. So a good part of that would come from that, along that route.
Any further questions councillors? No. Thank you, Miss Nazaroff.
Thank you.
Um next we have NM seventy three slash twenty, notice of motion of councillor Stravinos, revising the Payne Reserve Plan of Management, speaking forwards, Mr James Horan.
Good evening. Um I'm here in relation for the motion of Payne Reserve. Um I myself are the, as the, are the head coach of Phoenix F C. Um we've been playing at Payne Reserve for twenty five years and the club has gone thirty five years here in Sydney. Basically what we would like and need is um an upgrade of the amenities. Um at the moment, there's no hot water and the toilets are in really bad condition. There's where we fill the hot water or the water bottles up is the tap is between two urinals, which I run my own plumbing company and that's against any code or standards. The doors don't really work and it's not suitable for families, players, ladies, kids, and we have a couple of disabled supporters who also can't use the facilities. Um upgrade is 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 really needed. Um also, in terms of the pitch itself, our typical week, we train Tuesdays, Thursdays, we have to literally have to bring a shovel to fill fill potholes in because of dogs. And before any game, we'd have to um scoop up all the poo before kickoff. Um newer, there's a new irrigation system on the park. It's uh it's it's serving no purpose as the grass on the pitch doesn't grow properly, so pretty much nee- needs to be relaid. Um I'd suggest a fence around the pitch to keep the dogs out. Also, the lighting on the pitch when we're training on Tuesdays and Thursdays literally just lights up a third of the pitch, the middle of it. So two thirds of the pitch are useless during during the winter months. Um our future plans at the club are to take on junior teams. We've taken on two more junior teams this year and to grow it from there. And what we really need is facilities. So the area is used by the local community, obviously three or four other senior teams, our junior teams, um Rainbow Public High School, they use it as as a sports field. Um and it would be great if we could get any sort of help at all. Um what else? I myself am a licensed coach here in Australia and so is James and three other guys. So our plan, as I said, is to grow as a football club and provide coaching for local kids and then eventually have a full junior setup. But um if we could start now and try and and get some sort of facility to upgrade, it would be uh much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr Horan. Um any questions councillors? No?
Thanks, thanks very much.
Uh next we have NR three slash twenty, notes of rescission motion submitted by councillors Vich, Luxford and Stravinos, draft Kensington and Kingsford Development Control Plan, post exhibition report, speaking for is Mr Brendan Horry.
Uh sorry. That's fine actually. Testing, okay. Um okay, so just a quick note, um not, you don't need to change that until I touch base on the heritage section, so I'm just spending the first two minutes on something else. Um so I'd like to start by briefly challenging the logic that prevented um the draft, the amended draft D C P returning to public exhibition. And the amendments to the draft D C P were made that included adverse changes to certain block controls that were advantageous not to the benefit of the general community or future inhabitants, but to property developers alone. It appears that these changes were the result of submissions and lobbying made by the representatives. Um and it was, I think it's undemocratic for the council to have voted to sort of remove the public's right to review and respond to these changes. Um as an example, if a DA that has already gone on public exhibition then receives approvals and then the owner and developer of uh amends the proposal, it has to go back to public exhibition. So in other words, you can't receive approval for four stories and then decide actually you want the possibility for nine and and you just sort of change it. That's not how a democratic society works and that defeats the purpose of having that sort of system set up. Um so however, as council previously voted against giving the community the right to respond to these amendments, uh we would kindly request council members to fairly consider and vote for the motions put forward by West Ward on behalf of the resident, of behalf of the community. Um I think one of the main points that we're putting forward is for a mixture of housing typology and we think it's important that there's sort of allowances or provisions for both one, two and three bedrooms. Um because I mean, we all know that it's not good for people to sort of be isolated in these small apartments. And these sort of developments have negative long term impacts on the community and society at large. Uh generally, people only accept and tolerate these types of accommodation out of short term necessity. If the rules, the D C P do not specify the housing mix, it will only lead to developers' financial motives of maximizing the amount of boarding rooms and studios in developments as these offer the highest rate of return per square metre. And I say this as someone who has firsthand experience working with property developers, quantity surveyors. Um now I'm just going to briefly touch on the heritage value. So as I understand, the last time that, um so for the Kensington and Kingsford Town Centres, the last review was two thousand and two and so the current D C P from two thousand and thirteen only factors in that sort of study from two thousand and two. Um and so for example, for block, I mean, this is one of a few examples, for twenty seven A and B, the this, the page twenty, sorry, ninety four says, on barrel street front, digitalize a standalone Victorian uh style dwelling house. The block provides opportunity for distinctive urban design outcome that integrates historic fabric with contemporary. However, there's actually nothing to sub- to to protect this. So I say, where is the protection afforded by rules and legislation for this historic fabric? There's none. It allows for demolition and for five story development. And I mean, the sort of statement in the D C P is just lip service as far as I'm concerned.
And you've got one more minute, Mr Horan.
So there's a few, I've just taken some screenshots of a few houses basically, which are either federation or interwar buildings. And then there's that Victorian terrace. So all of that block is basically slated for between five to nine stories. And I just think council has a sort of a responsibility to both the community and future generations to do a heritage study because I know for a fact that there's enough precedence in Randwick and Sydney to support some of these buildings being listed. Um and I mean, I think it's just not being considered because it's because it's in the neighbourhood. So there's a few, I mean, I know I've got no time. So there's a few examples um of the block controls where there's been certain amendments which are then not in the benefit of the community. The community didn't have a right of response to those and then so I've I've said the A D G outlines the importance of solar access for residents in apartment dwellings. Living rooms and private open spaces should receive a minimum of two hours direct sunlight between nine AM and three PM.
Mr Horry, have you got a lot more to go? That's four minutes.
I've got one more minute.
I already announced you had one minute, a minute to go. So you've got one, a couple more or?
Just just two more quick points, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of issues. So in short, there's a lot of issues with the block controls that me and a few residents have reviewed and it looks unlikely that you could achieve seventy percent of those dwellings to comply with A D G standards of cross ventilation and solar access. And I mean, we've listed a few examples and we we have a few more. And the final point was just with regards to the amendment that um didn't allow for bicycle or motorcycle. It was only one per ten rooms. And I mean, that alone doesn't even comply with the the A R H S A P. So I mean, I think there's a few things there which we're hoping councillors will support the motion put forward. Thanks.
Um any questions for Mr Horan? Councillor Vich?
Uh thanks for coming in. Um I understand when you got in touch with me, you had concerns because of your professional expertise as a lo- as a architect and also as a relatively long term resident. And you had pointed out to me uh some of the issues with the SEP. And you were the person who actually really raised the issues uh with the Apartment Design Guideline. Could you just reiterate what was your main concern with the SEP and the Apartment Design Guidelines?
Yes, I mean, is, I know that they've introduced the flexible space which allows for up to nine stories and um I think there's a bit of issue around that because I think that, I mean, flexible is flexible and so even if council rejects it, I believe that if it goes to the Land Environment Court, council doesn't have much of a leg to stand on because I think developers can make a point that, oh, it says flexible is flexible. And I understand that that's to try and create um extra space, but with those kind of footprints, it's going to create overshadowing onto neighbours. I mean, you not, it's not I think the current, some of the block controls that have been amended don't allow for great development. And another example I'm thinking of is there's a a heritage building on Duke Street. Originally, it was set for a six metre setback which included that building, which more or less secured that building to be intact. And then the amendment changed to three metres, which means that that building is completely compromised. It might, if a developer is generous, they might retain the facade, but the integrity is lost. And that so called Duke Street Plaza that council wants to create for people, um I don't see how you can have a six metre street with a nine story building and then that's going to have enough sort of solar access. It's going to be safe, it's going to receive sunlight, it's just going to create a wind tunnel and yeah.
Um any further questions? Thank you, Mr Horry. Uh next we have, speaking for is Ms Margarita Kill.
Yes, I've, I've spoken before, so I'm just going to be very brief. Um it is, um but I would like to say it's important that the rescission motion to put forward by the West Ward councillors be passed for a number of reasons. The amended draft D C P Kensington and Kingsford Town Centre presented at the twenty seventh of October uh shows numerous and fairly major changes from the draft D C P. The timeframe of less than a week given to respond to the amended version was not sufficient for the community affected to scrutinize the draft. And I guess that most councillors, especially a range of items, uh did not have much time to read and compare the amended version with the original one. Since the October ordinary council meeting, us locals have been talking about the new changes to the July uh D C P and have raised a number of concerns with the councillor representing our West Ward and we need to be heard. For the above reasons, I sincerely hope that you will support the West Ward councillors as representatives of our community by passing the rescission motion, as I'm sure you would like them to support you in projects in your ward. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms Kill? Uh councillor Vich?
Let us ask one. Thank you so much for coming in. I know you've been involved with the uh community uh down around Kensington uh for quite a long time. Uh and I think it's fair to say that yourself and those other residents have always taken a very active and interested in involvement and engagement in the area and what's going on. And what would be your feedback from the other members of the community that you've been speaking to?
Well, I think the great, the great concerns generally about the high rise, a lot of people don't like, which obviously is a given at the moment, but uh but also now with the recent changes in the um that the density and the effect it will have. We also feel that the the student accommodation, five out of six applications in the high rise of a student applications, uh or student housing. And um there are lots of boarding houses in the area in other streets and we feel there is an oversupplies and a real imbalance in the community. We want a diverse community with accommodation for families and others. And so so there needs to be um um I think a bit, a more balanced approach to to the future of Kensington and Kingsford. Um otherwise, we will just be a student city. We will also end up having very few, we want to have diverse um uh businesses, uh you know, so I think it will be very detrimental i- if we don't get that diversity. That's a a great concern among uh local.
Uh any further questions? Thank you, Ms Kill. I'm sorry.
Can I make a few, a further declaration? In relation to the rescission motion, it's a non significant, non pecuniary interest. I'm a business owner in the Kingsford Town Centre. I think I should just mention that and it should be put on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Stravinos, can you ask councillor Singh to come back in? Because we'll go through the motions and anything, go back out. Thanks councillor Singh. So councillors, we'll just go straight into the uh motions that have been spoken into. So CS fifty six slash twenty, Sturt Street Crossing, do I have a mover?
And I'll second it, Mr Mayor. I'll second it.
Councillor Vich? Councillor?
And I'll second it.
Stravinos?
Oh, sorry.
And I'll be moving that in an amended fashion. Um I believe I sent the amendments through. Sorry, I'll just look for this. we've had representations from uh the Rainbow Street Public School community. Uh in fact, they've been making representations since two thousand and seventeen, since the changes uh to the traffic flows came into effect as a result of the construction of the light rail. Um look, I'm not, this is not a competition. I'm not for a second saying that any of the other projects that were listed in the in the report uh are any less worthy. Um however, there is just absolutely no doubt in my mind, uh having spent time on that street, that uh this section of Sturt Street is very, very dangerous. Uh to see uh parent, parents with their young children, uh you know, sometimes they'll have a pram or a young baby in their arms, holding, you know, the hands of their young uh primary school child. There's high school students and older primary school students and they are literally running the gauntlet across this very busy road. When when I was there, it was a little bit different to what the video showed. There was very heavy traffic flowing uh in both directions. Um it's quite hair raising uh to watch. There was a recommendation uh on the, on the twenty, on the twenty eighteen, October twenty eighteen Traffic Committee stating that this should go ahead. I do understand that based, uh that was to install a pedestrian crossing with some traffic cushions. Now, I know that there have been other residents actually in West Ward who've had those installed and it's been an issue. Uh and so the 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 design was proposed to be changed to a raised pedestrian crossing. But those issues were raised about the traffic cushions in in sort of late two thousand and nineteen. So there actually would have been time to to sort that out and put forward another design. I really don't know what else to say about this, that the the traffic is a disaster. Whatever your views on the bike path, I know there were very strong fuses either way. The fact was, is that the bike path that was proposed for that street contained uh traffic lights on the corner of Stewart and Botany, traffic lights on the corner of Sturt and Evoca, two pedestrian crossings on Sturt Street, plus two pedestrian crossings in Little Side Street, Patton and Bird, and then another two shared zones. I mean, all of those have to meet the warrants uh for children, for pedestrians and for traffic. You can't just chuck them in there. Uh they have to be approved and I think that just gives uh everyone a bit of an indication of the le- both the level of traffic and and the level of pedestrians, uh children that are that are trying to cross on the road in that area. Uh this was, uh this has received delays for a number of reasons, but I don't feel comfortable um delaying this any longer. I think there should be an argument, we can uh get funds from, there are funds there from the Light Rail Support Plan. I know it's issues with staff resourcing, it's it's a, it's a pedestrian crossing. I'm really hoping we could seek funds to to get someone to come in and project manage this so it wouldn't be a burden on our staff so the other projects could still go ahead. I'm not looking to remove any of the other projects that are also important. Uh and that pretty much sums it up. I I I hope you can support my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Vich. Councillor Stravinos to second it?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I was a bit shocked when I read this report because generally what happens is, Because generally, what happens is when we get a report like this telling us that for the, for the approval of a pedestrian crossing, it's usually, you know, they come back and they say, oh, the report has been received and noted. You know, and it will be, we will be looking at this and we look at pedestrian movements. And I was actually surprised that it came back saying that this pedestrian crossing has been earmarked since 2018. And we've left it almost two years to consider putting it in. And that, that was a bit of a shock to me when I read the report. Because I remember the report coming back in 2018. And I was of the belief that we, we would get, get to it sooner, like very soon. And I can't believe that we haven't budgeted for it. For, you know, it hasn't even been mentioned in the budget for next financial year or even this financial year. So, look, I think this, as a matter of urgency, we really need to consider putting it in. Because of the fact that we've got people running the gauntlet. And I know Sturt Street very well because I've, I've visited a number of people along that stretch of road. I've actually got a client who lives at, who lived at 78 Sturt Street many years ago. And I know that this street is synonymous with, you know, with, you know, a lot of traffic. And particularly with the removal of the Nine Ways Roundabout, this area now is, is used as a rat run. So, look, I would urge my fellow councillors tonight to support this, this amendment that we've put up. Because as a matter of priority, I think we should put it in. We're talking about the safety, not only of children, but it's, it's a public liability for the entire community. So I think we really need to consider putting it into the budget and getting onto it immediately. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
councillor Luxford.
Yeah, I'm in, in support of the amendment. Having had two sons that went to Randwick Boys and had to negotiate Sturt Street, Peyton Street, myself and themselves when they were bussing at home. The traffic around there is a nightmare and it is really hard to cross any of those streets in that vicinity. And I believe this morning there was an accident, Sturt Street and Evoque Street. The, the traffic at either end of Sturt Street and the Peyton Street intersection is really bad. And you've got traffic coming up from Maruba, you've got people rat running, and you've got people trying to get their kids to school. So this pedestrian crossing has been raised for quite some time. And it really should be a priority of our council because we should be also trying to keep the children and, you know, the boys and girls at the high school safe. So I will be supporting.
councillor De Sis.
Mr. Mayor, unlike the ward's councillor who said that, I'm not saying one project's better than another or what should be prioritised. I have a different view. I believe we should prioritise this project and support it. In our community at the moment, we have a very strong movement that says black lives matter. As our discussions progress, at the end of the discussions, the outcome appears to be all lives matter. Now, I've seen the video. So I'm now become part of the group or the proactive group. Because I can see the need for action on this particular project. We must prioritise it. If it saves just one life, it's worth it, Mr. Mayor. Just one life. But if we postponed it, it was something else I would say, okay, maybe, may. But in that 12 months, if one or two lives, even one life is lost, how terrible we would feel. Mr. Mayor, we boast in Randwick City about a sense of community. And now the community has come to us and said, we have a problem. A bit like the old Apollo 13, Houston, we have a problem. Now, are we going to do something about this, Mr. Mayor? Are we going to act in a way that brings those three astronauts back to earth? Are we going to be responsible? I think we should be. As I normally say, ward councillors deal with ward issues. But this isn't just about a ward. This is about a community. And I feel very drawn into this debate. And I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
councillor, I just got a question from councillor Parker and I'll come back.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the relevant officer. Look, I make no comment on the particular merits of this project or not, I'm just curious. And after some further clarification as to the resource implications of the proposed motion as moved by councillor Beech and the implications in relation to other projects which are identified in the report.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I can refer councillors to page 194 of the business paper. Under the, the heading, the resource strategy implications, to respond to councillor Parker's question. As noted within the report, all my original advice, funding may be available for identified savings in our current budget for this particular project, however, due to our existing commitments, which are noted just above by way of the 11 projects that have been previously adopted by council. Council resources have already been allocated to these projects, deemed priority in the current budget. And should council decide to proceed in this project, in this current financial year, a project of similar scale and complexity would need to be replaced. So just to answer the question in short, should this project be re-prioritised, we would have to remove a project from the current year to, for it to be delivered.
Question?
Just a, in light of that advice, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the relevant officer, could I just get some advice as to how that, that decision is actually envisaged to be made in light of the fact that there are already existing projects with existing council resolutions?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, your question, it is, is the question in relation to the replacement of one of the projects identified within the paper? Correct. Yeah, so in, in, in short, there's three departments that are responsible for the delivery of a project, project like this. All three departments are allocated to other projects. But for a transport project to be allocated, we would need one of those to be replaced.
All right. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Might I suggest to the mover of this motion that if, if she would like to move this particular motion as proposed, it would be only appropriate for her to identify what particular project it is that she intends to strike off the particular list before asking councillors to vote on it?
Yeah, you're putting that to councillor Beech? Because then I'll, I'll go straight to there.
I do disagree. I've seen all sorts of projects get funded at the last minute in this council. One of them was also in West Ward, it was the parking station, it was the parking lot at the Kingsford Nine Ways. Suddenly we found $800,000 or however much it cost and we whipped that in. That went in in no time, I couldn't believe it. The next time I went down there, it got built within months. I, I see this happen all the time. Sometimes we can get things done in two seconds and the next time, suddenly there's, there's no funding. We do have the funding there in the Light Rail Support Plan. I have made a, a point of specifying that that should include, we could allocate the funding for the design, capital works and project management and whatever staff. It's, it's just one single pedestrian crossing. It's not a, it's not a massive piece of infrastructure, it's not a, a building or an amenities block. It's, it's a crossing, I understand. And it already has been through the Traffic Committee and a lot of the issues dealt with. So I just can't see why this, this could be something that could be added on. I will not be recommending any of the other projects for removal.
Is that a further question before I go to councillor Mattson?
No, I would just like to foreshadow that in event that this particular motion is successful, that I will move that the Yarra Road Traffic Safety Programme be retained, the Bunnerong Road, Perry Street and Franklin Street intersections be retained, and the Duncan Street pedestrian refuge be retained, and that the decision be made of the remaining projects.
I'll second that. I agree with you. councillor Mattson.
Look, just can I ask for clarification on the director's reply to councillor Parker's question? My understanding from reading the, the paragraph that the director directed us to is that it's not so much a funding issue as a allocation of resources issue. Is that correct? Can I just clarify that?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct councillor Mattson. Funding should, could be available for delivery of this project is that we don't have the internal resource commitments available to deliver this project within the current financial year. Even if we, we were to outsource the project, that still requires oversight from an internal resource. So we, we would not be able to deliver this project in this current financial year, should, should there be any capital works remain.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask through you to the councillor, councillors Beech and was it Stavreinos who moved it? Or that you consider deferring this matter to the December council meeting to allow discussion amongst councillors on which of the identified programmes could be either dropped or amended. As you, has already been indicated by councillor Parker, there, should this matter be resolved tonight, there will be, how can I put it? Warfare between the councillors as to which project is to be retained or dropped. For that reason, I'm suggesting that, yes, you, you defer it to the next council meeting so that we can get feedback perhaps from the staff and from our fellow councillors as to whether there is a consensus that one of those projects would be dropped, could be dropped, or perhaps pushed to a different time of construction.
Before I go to you councillor Roberts, I've got a question over here. And councillor Luxford. What I'll do councillor Mattson, I'll get the question off councillor Luxford. Then I'll hear councillor Roberts has been waiting to speak. And then we'll ask the question back about, now that councillor Shavrenos is back in the room, then we'll go back and ask the question again, if you don't mind.
Just a question there. So we, we have this list of of projects that are the delivery programme. The pop-up cycleway in Todman Avenue, I'm quite happy to give that up. However, my question is, is that not being done? That's not our, our project. That project is being done by transport and they're doing the design and they're, they're providing, the resources are all theirs. So why is it on our list?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I do refer councillors back to page 194, which is the, the business paper. Within the report, it does note a project of similar scale and complexity. So that list that I mentioned above is the delivery requirements of the transport team this year. The pop-up cycleway is not a representative project that could be replaced. It is being delivered by transport from New South Wales. But there are current staff time commitments that are allocated to that project in consultation activities and the development of the detailed design. So they still have, whilst we're not delivering the project, we still have a, an allocation of resources within that, within that project.
Okay councillor Luxford.
So I was under the impression that the design was not being done by us, but it's being done by transport? Because I keep asking about the design and I keep getting fobbed off. So, and told that transport is doing it. So why do we have staff allocated if they're doing the design?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The project does run through Randwick City Council's LGA, therefore council's internal resources have been allocated to the design to ensure that all the previous work is considered.
councillor Roberts.
Yeah, this is a, it's a tough one. I, I think it was related to a motion councillor Beech brought last meeting. He brought a motion last meeting, I think, regarding this. I don't know if that was coincidental that this has come up. This is the report that's come back as a result of, thank you. Actually, that's what it says here, yes. So that's what it was. My, actually firstly a question to the councillor. Any particular reason why you've specified raised as opposed to any other option that staff could consider? Why, why have you said raised? Why have you specified it has to be a raised one? Could, could you leave the design to the council staff?
If, if I may, I've had discussions with staff about this for a number of months. And it was originally designed to be just level with a number, I think, like eight traffic cushions. But what's happened in the last 12 months or so is that there are other locations, other very busy roads. The example's actually Snape Street, where traffic cushions were installed as a result of it being identified for funding under the federal government's black spot programme. There are a number of little accidents there. So they put in these speed cushions, but what happens is that the, the, the cars go across them at speed. And for the people who live near them, they, it's driving them mental. There'd been many, many complaints. And so this is, this is what I've been informed just through offline discussions with staff. And so that a decision had been made to sort of not go through that angst again and to have this other design to sort of protect the amenity of the people who lived on that street. That's the only reason. So I had been told that the reason it'd been delayed is because of this new design to have the raised crossing instead of the flat crossing with the, with the traffic humps. And that because there was going to be four on one side, four on the other, it was going to probably affect quite a number of residents who live there. Look, councillors, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I really feel like we've had many discussions about, I'm sorry, I'll let you continue.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, this is a real hard one for me. I, I agree that there is a safety issue. I, I agree, I agreed last, last meeting. And, and, and I think the safety issue is, is clear and present. And anything could happen at any time, really. We, we really can't control our kids. I've got four kids myself going to school. And I like to think they're pretty safe around the roads, but you never know, do you? And, and drivers don't see kids. You know, they don't see kids, they're small. And I, I also know that it is a rat run because I use it as a rat run myself. I live in Maruba. And if I'm going to Anzac Parade to turn right, head to the city, can I turn right on Rainbow? No, I can't. So I either go on Rainbow and then get stuck by everyone else trying to turn right because it's just one lane, trying to turn right before Anzac Parade. And then a traffic jam happens. So what's the option? Go down Sturt Street, straight on to Anzac Parade, turn right and you're good to go. So it's, it is a rat run. And it's just going to get worse. So, you know, but I, I acknowledge that these other projects are at risk if we support the motion. So I, I, I am torn. However, and, and the raised, the raised issue, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that could stay in there. It's going to be probably the final design, I think, with regards to the, when the, the bike track goes through. So on, on balance, notwithstanding the negative impacts on other projects, I'm confident that that could be worked through by staff. I think safety needs to trump this in this particular case. And so therefore I'll be supporting it.
councillor Mattson, because councillor Shavrenos wasn't in the room, can I get you just to pose your question again, please?
For the benefit of councillor Stavreinos, the director in answer to a series of questions put by myself and councillor Parker identified that the issue was not the funding source, but the reallocation of council time commitments in terms of staff planning and oversight. He identified that on that page, there is a list of projects with bullet points. What, essentially one of them would have to be dropped in order to allow this project to go ahead. My suggestion to councillor Beech, the mover of the motion, is that essentially we, well, we should defer this to the December council meeting. That would give us four weeks to liaise amongst ourselves to get feedback from the director in order to make a, a decision as to how to best allocate the director's restricted work resources. Otherwise councillor Parker's already identified that he will fight for his favourite projects. No doubt other councillors would fight for theirs. It could get quite unseemly and we might run the risk of a rescission motion being put in if one of those projects is just arbitrarily picked and given the flick. So I would ask yourself So I would ask yourself and the mover to agree to defer it to the next meeting to allow consultation between amongst councillors and the acquiring of feedback from the general manager and the director as to the optimal allocation of limited resources. And if not, I'll move that as an amendment, Mr Mayor.
With all due respect, we're talking about a safety issue here. It's a safety issue. It's an issue that concerns the community. I can't believe now that we're gambling now between.
Councillor Mattson is not trying to stop it, he's just asking which one will come out. It's a proposal that's quite a.
Mr Mayor, I've already given you an option.
I think councillor Parker had his hand up. Yeah, okay, go to that question, yeah?
Thank you. Look, clearly, and I thank councillor Mattson and everyone for the comments and suggestions. Look, clearly when this motion, I put the motion up, there was never an idea that someone else is going to have to lose out so we can get this in, you know? That was not the intention then or now. We have money and there has been constant discussions on this council about the need to resource our departments and staff to actually get through the huge backlog of work. And it's been a big year. We understand that there's been tremendous pressure on our staff due to all of the issues that have arisen out of Covid. Now, that is why I have recommended as part of this motion to resource someone to undertake the project management and additional staffing is needed. That would take us up potentially to around the time of the next budget. It may well be that there would be a necessity to put that person on an ongoing basis through our operational budget. This would be a temporary means, perhaps with the idea of putting someone on a more permanent basis, simply because the work, even if it was a contract for one or two years, it could be a contract, to assist our staff to get through the huge workload that they've been dealing with just as a result of living in a big growing city and a result of Covid. May I put it through the mayor to the relevant staff person, perhaps the general manager? Would this be an option?
Through you, Mr Mayor. As has been indicated by the director of city services, this is not an issue of funding and it's not as simple as putting an additional staff member on to manage a project like this. The project, a project like this does cut across a number of different departments. And what we are trying to do is ensure that our capital works programmes that we adopt in our budgets are able to be delivered. We do have a number of projects that have moved from year to year and a couple of them are on that list. What we are trying to do by giving you the advice today is to ensure that these projects do get done and are delivered this financial year. And the commitment we make to the community when we list those projects is that it will be finished. So from a resourcing perspective, we do have to be mindful of the oversight and the commitment from existing staff even to project manage any contractors that might come on board.
If I may, a follow-on question, because I don't think it really answered my question, which is why we can't actually get someone else on who may be on a contract, partly funded through the light rail support plan. I just don't feel my question's been answered.
So through you, Mr Mayor, could I just clarify what we have, what we're actually debating before us? Do we have a proposed amendment to defer the matter to the December council meeting? Or are we exclusively debating the motion?
Take it that that was rejected?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Amendment, yeah?
Further to that, I've foreshadowed a subsequent amendment in the event that this amendment fails.
A second. Councillors, in order to reduce the possibility of an unpredictable productive disagreement on the floor of this council tonight as to which projects should or should not be deleted or postponed, I would, as I indicated, I would move that this matter be deferred to allow for consultation between councillors, between councillors and the general manager and the director of city services on the question of how best to rationalise the workload confronting the director and to provide more feedback on point B of the councillor's motion, which does indeed discuss the allocation of funds for design capital works and additional staffing. To do anything else tonight with the limited amount of information we actually have, I think is not going to bring out the best result. So I would ask for a second for that amendment. Councillor De Roche, as indicated, he would second that. Do I have to address it anymore?
Do you want to speak on it, a second? Yeah, go.
Look, we've heard very clearly from what Todd has said and then we've heard councillor Mattson and then we heard Dylan mention some projects which it was mentioned. No offence councillor Mattson, Dylan's favourite projects, but it wasn't. It's Dylan's projects that he's mentioned is something that we've been waiting for a long time to ensure that it happens to make our intersections safe, safer, but because of the amount of accidents that have happened. Everyone knows what I do for a living and safety is paramount. I work around schools nearly every single day. But if we're going to lose any of the projects that councillor Parker has mentioned before, we're putting other people in danger at the same time. Council does mention here in the recommendation priority for 2001, sorry, for 2021 and 2022. Maybe this can be rushed and maybe it can come in after we have more consultation, after we have a talk about it, after we discuss it with council, like councillor Mattson has just said then. But for now, let's not skip one to bring in another and then put other people at risk.
Question or councillor Hamilton said it? No, councillor Hamilton first about the amendment, yeah?
Yep, thank you, Mr Mayor. I actually support the amendment, but not all the wording. I support the deferral. I think that I take councillor Veach's point that when she put this forward, she didn't realise that it would actually push something else off the schedule. I don't think that as councillors, we should be, you know, we should be giving any advice at all to directors on how to plan their workforce. I think that we shouldn't always put into question every single aspect of what the council are doing. Stay up here where we need to be as councillors, as directors, board of directors. Of course, we're advocating for our residents, that's perfectly normal. I think that if the wording was changed to take out, talk to the director of city services on how best to rationalise the workload of staff, I would remove that and just defer it for consultation if councillor Mattson and De Roche are happy to just take that wording out because we don't really need to talk to a director about how to recruit staff to get work done. That's getting right in the weeds.
Councillor Mattson is.
Perhaps my wording was perhaps insensitive and yes, certainly perhaps that should be reworded with a removal of how best to rationalise the workload of staff and replace with simply ask for feedback from the director as to the priority of the identified projects and possible options for achieving an effective progression of them. So I'm thus, I think, removing any suggestion that we're going to interfere with how the director does his job. It allows for feedback from the director more.
So thanks councillor Mattson. So on the basis of that, I'd support the amendment. I think that the fact that this was raised last month, at last month's council meeting and now it's in the business paper, I believe that the direction that we're actually getting from the staff is that we can't make rash decisions and just include something so quickly. So a deferral and a further discussion would really help because I believe that every resident would be absolutely advocating for the initiatives that are happening in their neighbourhood. And so it is a tough decision that I don't think that we should make immediately. So I support the amendment.
De Souza and then councillor Parker.
Mr Mayor, I won't be supporting the amendment. And I'll tell you why, Mr Mayor, because I can tell you a human life story and I won't be breaching any confidentiality because both the principal characters of our story have passed away. But when I was a young pharmacist, a family approached me. It was going to be a long weekend or it was Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday. And I remember the father and mother asked me, no, I want to have an extra day off, the Monday. And can you speak to your mate who owns the business and give us the day off? So I said, no problem, Elizabeth. I picked up the phone, their wish was granted. Mr Mayor, I still see that father carrying his white, this little white coffin out of the church, Peter Sinkovic. And it was, I asked myself, I picked up that phone, I made the call, a rogue driver. A rogue driver. When she was waiting with her brothers at the lights, a rogue driver ran and killed Kara Sinkovic. I have to live with that all my life. I still remember Peter's eyes and my eyes crossing in that church, that white coffin as he carried it out. I still ask myself if I didn't make the call would Kara be alive today? We are faced with that same dilemma here, councillors. We shouldn't defer, this is a safety issue. This is about saving lives. We are told it isn't a financial problem, it's about resources. If it saves just one life, shouldn't we move heaven and earth and address this concern? I tell you, I have to live with the sadness of Peter carrying that white coffin out. If one death occurs from now till when we put that pedestrian crossing and we are informed about that, I wonder how you will carry that burden which I carry every day of my life. Don't defer this, this is an issue, this is the decision that should be made today. That's why we're elected to council. We have to show leadership on this. Let us do the right thing.
Okay, so I think councillor Parker, you were next or you retracted? I'd saw your hand, I'll give you my names down. Councillor Bowen, after that councillor Luxford.
Mr Mayor, I just want to be clear that I will actually reserve my right, but I'm clearly foreshadowing a further amendment in the event that this fails.
Councillor Bowen?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. And I apologise to the meeting for my lateness and obviously I didn't catch all of the debate. But I did receive some emails. But look, just very simply, we're talking about a pedestrian crossing at a school. I mean, I know we have our budget, but a budget isn't, and we have to pay attention to it, but a budget is not chiselled in stone. I've seen this council spend huge amounts of money in very short turnaround. This is a pedestrian crossing for children's safety. And I think it's really a no-brainer and we should support it. I won't be supporting a deferral. We can argue until the end of time about competing pressures on the council for finance. That's the council, there will always be far more work for the council to do than it can stomach. That's its job, that's the nature of being on the council. But you have to move with the times, you have to be flexible. And if the case is made as it's been made here, we accept it and we support it. And that's what I intend to do.
Actually councillor Luxford, then I'm going to put it because otherwise we'll be here too.
I won't be supporting this amendment either. This pedestrian crossing has been around since 2017, it is now 2020. You know, there was an accident at Sturt Street and Avoca Street this morning. It's only a little ways down to Peyton Street. So someone could have been crossing there unsafely and been hit or killed in that accident that happened there this morning. A pedestrian crossing down in the middle of the street that will be a safe place for students, children, whoever to cross is way better than no pedestrian crossing at all. We cannot defer this any longer. It's taken already three years to get this far. It's saving people's lives. I don't think that we should be told that we have to choose between other projects. That's not for us to do. I think that the pedestrian crossing is something that is valid, that is needed and supports our community. So no, no project should be voted to be better or worse than the other. We're here to support our community in every ward within the whole city. So all projects are important that support our residents. And this one is just as important as all the others that have been listed. So we cannot defer, I will not support the amendment and I'm supporting that a pedestrian crossing is built.
Okay, councillors, I'm putting it, so all those in favour of the amendment, raise your right hand. Of the amendment. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Shuri, councillor Nielsen, councillor Mattson and councillor De Roche. All those against the amendment. Councillor Veach, councillor Staverinos, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Singh, councillor Bowen, councillor Roberts, councillor De Souza and the mayor. Sort of clear that lost. Councillor Parker, you had a foreshadow of an amendment?
I foreshadowed the amendment. Councillor, oh sorry, Mr Kelly, do you have my proposed amendment? I move councillor Veach's motion with the following points. I'll just give him time in order to do that. Just for the benefit of the meeting, I'm more than happy to accept any proposed inclusions from the following list, which was included in the report. Obviously, one will need to come off in order to do that. Okay, do we have that up?
I'll just let councillor Parker finish it and then I'll have a second.
The following project be retained, is there a second for that particular motion?
Do I have a second? Councillor Nielsen?
Yep, councillor Nielsen, yep, so those three. To be clear, councillors, I'm happy to incorporate into this particular amendment any of the following which were included on the list. To be clear, this is not how I think we should be doing things. I clearly support. Well, yes, because the motion which, as proposed by councillor Veach, removes one of these projects without us knowing what that in fact will be. As such, I move the following, if there are any which councillors will like to include. If not, I'll just put their motion as proposed.
Councillor Nielsen, a second, would you like to speak?
I would because I'm supportive of what councillor Parker is referring to as well because obviously I totally support the installation of the pedestrian crossing that we've just been talking about. However, I don't want to lose some others that I've been fighting for for many years and they're now here on the agenda. So I want to have included, in other words, the following projects be retained. I want to have Arden Street, Frenchman's Road and Francis Street. And Duncan Street.
I'm happy to accept that. Are there any others which councillors would like to have included in the motion? Okay, I'm happy to include that too. Well, could I then suggest, councillors, that as a result of the previous decision, we do have to make a decision before us, otherwise one of these will need to come off and we don't know which one that in fact is. Well, that's on the, all right, that's fine, I'm happy to keep all of them on the list. But what I suggest, that clearly as on the advice which was presented to us, that cannot actually occur.
Actually, if all of them remain on the list, it's not an amendment, in my eyes, am I correct? Because it's exactly per recommendation, it goes back to the original motion. Okay, councillor Bowen?
I think this amendment should be ruled out of order because clearly the intent is to just invite a whole constellation of pet projects, which the purpose is to defeat the motion that is before the council, so it's a direct negative. It should be ruled out of order and we should get on, stop wasting everyone's time and get on and vote for the amendment, the motion that's before the council. Stop wasting everyone's time.
That is not a rational argument. We are putting forward what we consider must be retained. There possibly will be one that will not, which allows the one that we have the speaker referring to, in which case it's
Actually councillor, it's out of order because actually everyone asked for the whole list to remain on there. So I'll just go to the general manager.
Through you, Mr Mayor, can I just clarify in relation to the current programme of work and with the consultation that we've undertaken with each of the managers that are involved in the number of projects that we have. It is their advice that they have the capacity to complete the programme of works that has been provided within the report. Should council wish to progress with adding a project onto the list, then of course, as a staff, we would try and accommodate that. But what we have in this report through our recommendation is an indication that the more, the number of projects that we add to a list is likely to result in the delay or deferral of one or more projects. It's simply a matter of you have a programme and you do try and adjust for flexibility. In this case, we have been flexible this year with the inclusion of cycleways and our input into cycleways. But in relation to these particular matters of traffic, the result could be the delay of one or more of these projects. Not necessarily the exclusion, but certainly the delay to a future year. Now, all things going well, if we were able to progress with it, then we may be able to achieve it. But the indication from our staff is that it is likely something would be delayed to a future year.
You're willing to remove the amendment, councillor Parker? If all the, if every, all councillors have just said they want to include the whole list. It's double negative, I agree with councillor Bowen. It's out of order.
So in light of that, Mr Mayor, I remove the Francis Street item.
I'll rule it out of order and you know what?
Mr Mayor, in light of that proposal, I remove the Francis Street item.
Amendment and we're going to put the motion.
Add another amendment, please. Mr Mayor, I'd like to foreshadow another amendment, which is that I move the list removing the Francis Street amendment, the Francis Street pedestrian safety improvement.
I think I'll just going to put the matter, I'm putting it. So we remove that amendment. The original amendment. Yes, councillor Mattson?
The code of meeting practice, a motion to put a motion can only be preceded two councillors spoken for, two spoken against. I don't, I think there have been sufficient speakers on the amendment which failed. I'd like now to simply speak on the motion with all respect.
We have spoken for nearly an hour on the motion.
Mr Mayor, I have just moved a point of order with all respect.
Go ahead, councillor Mattson.
I think at this point, the best thing is to simply vote for the motion as written. Inevitably, the general manager is going to have to bring back a report, either in the immediate or in the medium or in the long term, pointing to a logistical problem that the staff have run into. I think at that point, we will simply have to deal with that contradiction. So I think the simple thing is just vote the motion through and inevitably the general manager is going to have to provide us feedback.
So in light of the sage guidance of councillor Mattson, I would suggest that a further report come to council outlining this particular problem as detailed, which includes voting this particular motion as proposed. So essentially what we're doing is where I've changed my amendment to include points A through to C. And then in regards to point D, that a further report come to council identifying the resourcing implications.
A second for the new amendment?
Councillors?
Can I just ask?
I'm speaking against, no, I don't, and I'm speaking against the amendment.
No, but actually, are you happy to accept point D before yes or no?
No, and I'm giving the reason why. Because I don't believe that this is the correct option for us. We have been through a very difficult year, but I have to say there has been a hugely flexible response from our staff and this council as to how we respond when issues come up, as they do. This year has been
Point of order?
There's been all sorts of people speaking tonight. Councillors, we are told and we know time and time again that what we vote on are decisions of council. Now, the decision, what I have put forward in this motion is that funds are allocated for design, for capital works, for project management and additional staffing as required. That is a decision of council, that is the decision we are making here tonight. We are not making a decision to include or exclude any other projects.
Councillor Veitch, was it simple? Do we accept point D? We'll come back to it. Anyone else would like to speak to the amendment or against it, councillor Roberts?
Yeah, I won't be supporting, I won't be supporting the amendment. I think there's no need for a report and frankly, the general manager is, has a professional prerogative to put a report in or not put a report in, depending on the situation. I've got confidence that the staff may be able to accommodate this along with the current arrangement. Or if not, and the need is there, they'll bring a report. To do this is unnecessary and frankly, it's a bit of an impulse.
Okay, we'll put the amendment, all those in favour? All those against? I declare that lost, so we go back to the original motion. And can we just, motion please? Okay, I'll put it. All those in favour of the motion as reads, please raise your right hand. I think, I don't need a division, but anyway. Councillor Veitch, councillor Stavreinos, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Singh, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Souza and the mayor. Those against? Councillor Hamilton, councillor Shuri and councillor Nielsen, so I declare that carried. We move on to NM 73/20, notice a motion from councillor Stavreinos revising the Payne Reserve Plan of Management. This is a mover and seconded by councillor Luxford.
Okay, thank you. Look, Mr Mayor, the motion before us tonight is pretty self explanatory. The Phoenix Soccer Club approached me along with a couple of other residents who brought it to my attention just over a month ago that the amenities block at Payne Reserve is really, it doesn't comply with current occupational health and safety standards. Look, we've got a club that's been playing there for a number of years. We've got schools that utilize the park as well. We've got any number of residents who also utilize the park. I think it's only fair that we include this in a future budget to look at doing something with the amenities block there. You know, we can't have, you know, especially in this day and age when we're encouraging our local residents to be active and to participate in sports, it's important that we provide amenity for our residents, particularly in a park that is used frequently for all sorts of extracurricular activities, whether it be having your dog walking around, whether it be soccer, whether it be football, whether it be running. This park is very heavily utilized. And particularly now at a time when we're facing a pandemic, we know that people or our residents are utilizing green space more than ever. So I think, councillors, all I ask is that you support this motion before us tonight to include an amenities block to be built or to be considered for future capital works programmes. I think it should be, it's a necessity for the area there and it will be utilized and that's all I'm asking for, thank you.
Councillor Luxford?
Yeah, I support the, this motion that councillor Stavreinos has brought to the table tonight. Those amenity blocks at Payne Reserve have been there since time immemorial. That, you know, there's never been much done at Payne Reserve at all. And I think that being the council that we are and that we care for our residents and that we promote activity within our city, all of our grounds and our parks should be set at a standard, you know? One should not be better than the other. And at the moment, we have quite a few that are lagging behind. And unfortunately, this one has lagged behind for quite a long time now. So I am in support of something being done up there in future capital works programmes, that it is earmarked for some sort of development for our residents and for the people that utilize the parks.
Councillor De Souza?
Mr Mayor, I like community projects. On the weekend, I was invited to a soccer federation function. It was the Randwick Football Club, you, Mr Mayor, were there. And as we heard the story, Richard took the club from zero and he became a community hero. Now, David McNiven here plays for the team, he was the player's player, it means he's a real team player. But the story I tell is that, thank you, Howard. The story I tell is, I heard the coach speak. And sport is really important to us. Now, this club, the Randwick Football Club, couldn't get ahead. They had no support. I said to the person who was driving me and I said, why on earth are they calling me? I said, I don't know what I've even done for them. And Richard reminded me, he said, 10 years ago, when you were the mayor, Noel, I came to you and I asked you for help, we wanted to start our soccer club. We had no one, you said to me, ring me on Monday, it was the mayor's Christmas party, ring me on Monday and my assistant, we'll do something. And he reminded me, 10 years later, they're a flourishing club. We have something called the Purple Hearts. The Purple Hearts is a group of people with lesser ability that share the same vision as we do and play soccer and are given opportunities. Sport is very important, it brings people together. Now, if this facility is deficient, as it's been made obvious to us, we should do something about it. This is a COVID environment, we talk about shovels to New South Wales, well, let's put the shovels to Randwick. Let's do the right thing. Let us support this project and let us continue to build that sense of community that we're so proud of in Randwick City. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I think judging by the accents, we're going to be competing with the players for Randwick FC and Phoenix. But anyway, yeah. Any further speakers? So I'll just put it, all those in favour, say aye. Against, declare that carried. So we move on to NR 3/20, notice of rescission motion submitted by councillor Veitch, councillor Luxford, councillor Stavreinos, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'll be moving this with the amendments that were sent through. I don't mind if councillor Stavreinos's name is up first, I don't mind.
The rescission motion as printed has to be put first and then any amendments made to the follow up motion is
Sorry, thank you for the clarification. I was hoping that we could put up the amended follow on motion as circulated to the councillors so they can see both the, I understand, you're right, we're writing on the rescission motion, but if we can, just so the amended follow on motion can be viewed.
Councillor Veitch, what we're going to do, we're just going to put it up, so just in case no one's read it. So we'll just put it up. Second, still we get up? So go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, we went through a long debate last week on this. And indeed, this issue has been debated for a very long time now. I hope it's not going to devolve to the extent it did in the previous council meeting. Councillors, but it's fair to say that the residents of Kingsford and Kensington have very deep and profound concerns about the DCP. I've had to be in a very difficult position as a councillor who did not support K to K, who did not support the increases in heights, who did not support the changes in FSR and the zonings and all of the issues that came with the K to K. But I did not feel that I would be doing the best I could as a councillor if I didn't go out and take the difficult decision of saying, we can actually do a little bit better on the DCP. Of having to explain, we've had to explain to our residents that we can't change the heights, we can't change all those different things, but we can try for a bit better. I believe that this should have gone back on exhibition just in the same way than a DA that has been on exhibition and then comes back and has changed very radically should go back on exhibition. We went through that debate last week, oh, sorry, last month. And it was not supported. There are many changes, we're trying to keep some of the original issues, some of the original points which did not include flexible zones. Councillors, if you had a DA that you were helping your residents with and it included just a flexible zone, you didn't know what was going to go up there, would you be going into bat for your residents not knowing what that was going to involve? We've received advice from, from resident here, Mr Hori, who's looked at these as an architect, is applying his professional expertise. And he said, I don't see how these can comply with the apartment design guidelines. I can't see how neighbouring residents are going to I can't see how neighbouring residents are going to achieve the solar access they need, the cross ventilation. There are just so many issues. Parking is one of them. Whether we, you know, as someone who's an avid supporter of cycling, the fact is, is that people will drive. We don't know if amended DAs will come in down the track and these will be put up as boarding houses after they're already built. So I really do urge you to support the strong community desire to have this DCP rescinded. This is a compromise matter. As you know, the rescission motion, the original follow-on motion was to put it back on exhibition. We have consulted with community, we've consulted with each other as West Ward councillors and our fellow councillors. And we are putting forward what we consider to be a compromise position, taking on the views of fellow councillors and their concerns about the deemed refusals. And we're taking this very, very, what for us is a very difficult step. But we are doing it to try and achieve some kind of consensus between council and community. And in all honesty, I do hope you will support it. When elected representatives consistently fail to listen to community members, it really does lead to the most sort of deep kind of cynicism within the community, where people simply give up. So I'm really asking that, please consider that this is 100% based on a lot of feedback. Many people were emailed, I requested feedback. Is this the way you want us to go? As I'm sure all the West Ward councillors did as well. This was not done lightly. It has come through a lot of consideration. We've gone to the director of city planning. We have circulated the amendments well in advance, so everyone can read them.
Councillor Veach?
And I urge you to support. Thank you.
So I'm not cutting you off. Sorry, I just want to clarify that we're actually voting on first that we rescind the original motion and then we'll come to your...
I do understand that, but I believe that the follow-on motion is relevant. Just so people are clear that the follow-on motion has changed based on what was on the business papers.
Just clarify that with all councillors that we're voting on with the rescission of the original motion. So councillor Stavreinos, do you want to...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, four years ago, when this council came out and decided to devise a housing strategy, the whole purpose of that strategy was to address the issue of housing affordability, to provide for our local residents. What we have before us tonight, with the LEP for K2K having been already voted upon and gazetted, we have any number of development applications before council that do not address the issue of housing affordability. What the DAs are actually doing is addressing the issue of student accommodation, which is completely different to addressing the issue of housing affordability for local residents. And what we've got tonight before us is a DCP that does not provide one single car space for the 1,000-plus rooms that are being proposed under the K2K proposal. Now, no one in this room can give me a guarantee that if we've got 1,000-plus rooms and we've got, let's say for argument's sake, 5% or even 10% of students who live in these rooms owning a motor vehicle, that's 50 to 100 cars that will be parked on our streets because they won't be parking anywhere on their site because developers do not need to provide any parking under this DCP. And what do you think that will do for the amenity of Kingsford and Kensington, which is already bursting at the seams with traffic and parking issues? This will create a bottleneck. This will create issues. This will be detrimental to the amenity of residents. And what it doesn't factor in also, Mr Mayor, is the fact that we're living in a COVID environment at the moment. The university has had to change its entire business model because students are no longer coming to the campuses anymore. Everything is done online. And what do I fear, Mr Mayor, is that these rooms will be empty and what we will have is a situation where professionals, essential workers will be occupying these rooms and these people will own motor vehicles. There's got to be some provision put into the DCP to have at least some sort of parking, parking for students. It's inevitable. There will be people that own motor vehicles that will be occupying these rooms. This is a serious problem, but this DCP does not address that issue. And that for me is a serious concern, very serious concern. As a business owner in the local area, I know with the battle I have every morning, I actually walk to work. I walk to work and I carry my laptop and I walk to work because I know the battle I'm going to have trying to find parking in Kingsford. I walk the 800 metres from my place down Rainbow Street and I walk to my office on Anzac Parade because I know what's involved in that. The other concern I have, Mr Mayor, is the fact that as a council, which has the second lowest tree canopy in New South Wales, why are we now reducing the landscaping at ground level from 25% down to 10%? I can't believe we're doing this. We're actually basically getting into the developers by saying you don't need to provide any parking and you don't need to address any issues with landscaping. And then we've got the setback issue, another major issue, setbacks. What sort of overshadowing are we going to create now by allowing these types of developments to go ahead and not even having... Each individual envelope has its own setback. Come on. Look, Mr Mayor, I'd urge my fellow councillors here tonight to seriously consider what they're voting for. You've got to be consistent. We all stood up in this chamber when we talked about Little Bay and we all got up and said that it was a gross overdevelopment of the area. And I was the first person, actually, I seconded the report submitted by our council against Little Bay, not only because it was deficient by 970 car spaces, but it was a gross overdevelopment of what the developer actually bought and what he was trying to achieve later on, trying to overdevelop the site from 450 units to 2,000. What we've got here is something very similar. And, Mr Mayor, I'm consistent and I will remain consistent and I will sleep well at night knowing that I've done the right thing by the residents of West Ward because I don't agree with what we've got here before us tonight. And I would urge you all to please consider rescinding, voting on the rescission motion and doing the right thing. Think about it.
Councillor Luxford?
Mr Mayor, as the West Ward councillor who actually lives and grew up in her ward, I never supported K2K as a resident before I became a councillor. And I still, representing my ward and the people who live around me, did not support it as a councillor. This DCP has not taken, or the amended DCP has not taken the residents' concerns into consideration. Parking is a major issue in Kensington and the fact that these student accommodations are going to be built without any parking whatsoever is a travesty. The laneway that goes behind Kensington Public School, I went to that school, my children went to that school. And I sincerely hope that Gay keeps her stables there and protects that school because the fact that a laneway is being narrowed now behind the school is not very good for the school's amenity at all. For the record, councillors, I'd like to advise you that we now have another student accommodation going in at 177 to 189 Anzac Parade. For those of you who are not familiar with Anzac Parade, that is where the existing uni lodge building is. Next door, there is Parade Lodge, which is a private accommodation hotel, little small block. Next to that, going south, is a red flat building, red brick flat building. From that red flat building to the laneway before the Masonic Centre is now going to become another uni lodge, more student accommodation. So that's a huge chunk of that block going not into residential housing, but more students with probably no parking there as well. So just thought I'd fill you in on that. Kensington has lost its soul. Its soul has been sold out now to student accommodation. Transient residents not building a sense of community that this council prides itself on. It's not delivering, K2K is not delivering what it was meant to do. The residents in Kensington would be happy with smaller building blocks and actual families moving in, people moving in to create community, a sense of community in our once very community-minded suburb. There was a time when people could walk up and down that street. They knew the shopkeepers, they knew the people that lived around them. They knew the people that lived in the surrounding streets. You know, at this point in time, nobody knows anybody. There are no shopkeepers on Anzac Parade. We have five shops currently operating and our chemist, our pharmacist has had to move down the road and no one can park to get there. So we have no amenity in Kensington whatsoever. Oh, we have the pub, you know. So there it is. We can all go drown our sorrows. The amendments that we have put forward here tonight are going towards trying to help our residents...
Councillor Luxford, we're not talking about the amendments yet. It's about whether we're rescinding the...
Well, yeah, so, yeah, I'll speak on that later. But, yeah, so there it is. So I urge you all to support the rescission motion and do something for the residents of Kensington because what we have done so far for them is decimate their suburb.
Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor D'Souza, and I'll go to councillor Hava.
Councillors, I speak against the rescission motion. This is not an LEP. This is not K2K, the local environmental plan we are debating. This is a development control plan. I think many of us have forgotten how it is that DCPs work. The LEP has two prescriptive measures, the building heights and the floor space ratio. But DCPs are not prescriptive like that. They are performance-based, which means that any developer can mount any argument, no matter what, to any sort of aspect of any DCP, which is what they will do with the existing DCPs we have in place and with what we will do with any further DCPs we put into place. Remember how it was when DAs came before us? Applicants would simply argue that such-and-such a setback under the DCP should be put aside. Why? Because they would argue that they could meet the underlying objectives of the DCP. And if they could mount a convincing argument, they were always right in the Land in the Environment Court. We forget that. With the existing DCP in that area, there is not a lot of guidance. A developer can take that DCP and say that such-and-such a setback at this level, that level should be put aside and I, the developer, should be able to build to the border, to the boundary line. That is why we are putting into place a new DCP, a stronger one. It has the block-by-block controls. It has the design excellence clauses. Yes, it does have the flexibility clauses. But the issue is that even without the flexibility clauses, if I was sitting on the Sydney Eastern Planning Panel, and I am a rep and councillor Hamilton is as well, and we got a DA before us, there would be little we could do to stop an applicant asking that such-and-such a DCP setback control be put aside, as long as they could convince a majority of the council that they were meeting the underlying objectives. It is that way with every single DCP across New South Wales. And it is also that way within the Land in the Environment Court. Therefore, we have to make our DCP stronger. The flexibility zone gives us a better weapon. It is based on design excellence. And have a look through the DCP. Design excellence is well and truly defined in the DCP. On certain sites, applicants will actually have to put together competitions for the best possible design. There is no way that the flexibility zones, as they've been so disparaged, are not a good idea because they beef up the underlying objectives. We make it clear both to council planning staff, to proponents, to applicants, to developers, to Land in Environment Court judges, to people who sit on planning panels, that there has to be design excellence. That means there will not be nine-storey buildings on particular laneways. Even the SEP for Apartment Guideline, Design Guidelines, guess what? That is also performance-based. None of its setbacks or whatever measurements we look at are set in concrete like the LEP's height and floor space ratios. Everything is open to the power of the developer to mount a convincing argument. The flexibility zones, they beef up our defence of those areas. Any of those proposals, any of those flexible, flexibility zones are still liable to the ambit of the SEP for Apartment Design Guidelines. I had someone write to me and say to me that...
I didn't put my stopwatch on, so I missed it. Sorry, councillor Mattson.
Look, I'll be brief. Look, councillors, we've won half the battle. We've stopped the spot rezonings. It was what they was about. Now we've got to stop the developers taking advantage of a vacuum around the built, the block-by-block designs, the building envelopes. We've got four developments we're fighting in the Land in Environment Court. The worst thing we could not do tonight is throw away our decision on last week. There was a lot of amendments put. I voted for some of them, other councillors voted for some. They just didn't get up. The only one that got up was to return the 25% measure for the soft soil plantings. I think that's as good as we're going to get. I think if we risk this, we will lose. And look, it's open to councillors at some other day to propose an amending DCP to address those issues. They can do that anytime, but let's, in the meantime, keep our adoption of this DCP. I'm happy to explain to other councillors how they can put together a proposal for an amending DCP.
Thank you, councillor Mattson.
Sorry, I have to interrupt here, but that is what is on the table. I circulated amendments for an amendment.
Councillor Veach, councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Mattson for speaking your full allocation, allowing me to finish off my notes. So I appreciate that. Councillors, I will not be supporting the rescission motion. I support the process that the council staff have done over many years. And I'd like to commend the staff for the professional work that they did in bringing forward the DCP. Before that, the LEP, before that, there was the K2K process. The process of this DCP has been completely above board. It's been professional. It's been exhaustive and it's been nuanced. It has been a very good and commendable process of DCP drafting. As such, it's time that we proceed forward as community leaders by supporting the DCP and not rescinding it tonight. Now, frankly, one of the councillors said elected representatives failed to listen. As a fellow councillor, I find that insulting and I think you would find that insulting to be accused of not listening or failing to listen to your constituents. It's frankly outrageous and I take offence on behalf of all other councillors here. Kensington and Kingsford is our city's artery. It's our city's artery. It's a wonderful entrance into our city with Anzac Parade and now that wonderful light rail piece of infrastructure coming through. It is a wonderful piece of investment. We should be thankful and we will be thankful. And hopefully, it'll be extended further south into other... And hopefully it'll be extended further south into other wards of this council. But I digress. But I digress, back to Kensington and Kingsford. And I acknowledge, no, I won't go there. So this DCP was proportional, it was balanced. And most importantly, it allowed for the future growth of our city. If you want to talk about specific things, I'm happy to talk about, you know, I'm happy to argue points all night if you like, but I'll choose one, the parking. Students, there'll be, there's a university right there within walking distance. And where these potential places are, they're right outside a light rail station. I think that particular point for student accommodation only is reasonable. And that's just one of the points. So frankly councillors, there's no valid reason to rescind and then, as per the foreshadowed motion, heavily amend the DCP in accordance with the whim of some councillors. I think that's not the way to go. Our consciences didn't elect us to do things like that. And I'll be supporting the DCP.
And what's the point of all the candidates?
I'm happy, I've finished, Mr Mayor.
There's no amendments as yet, we're talking about the rescission motion at the moment. Councillor Luxford had a question, but before we go on, can please stay to, we're talking on the rescission motion, and can we please have councillors show some respect and let everyone have their, without talking in the background, without asking questions, and let them finish their arguments. And please, the audience, please don't get involved in the discussions as well.
Yeah, just a question through to the director, city planning or whatever. Councillor Mattson alluded to being able to amend the DCP at a later, at a later point. So how soon can we start if our, if we are not successful here tonight on getting our residents appeased?
Councillor Mattson will let the...
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. To amend the DCP require resolutions from council and for council officers to report back to councillors on the basis for those amendments.
Okay, so now we can...
So we would be able to start tomorrow on that then, I presume?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It would be at the next available meeting.
Councillor D'Souza.
Mr Mayor, I'd start with a question to the relevant officer. Do we have any matters in court at the moment with regards to this?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, we do have four appeals against the genuine refusal of development applications that have been lodged with council.
Question, Mr Mayor, to the relevant officer. So we've got a pretty strong case, I think they've naturally gone to appeals. But our DCP, which is in place at the moment, that gives the community protections, doesn't it? And then I'll start speaking on the matter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, certainly the exhibited DCP, as supplemented by those amendments, do provide significant clauses within the DCP to guide future development and ensure much more certainty in terms of the built form outcome.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I speak now on the matter. Mr Mayor, there are two types of leaders. Leaders that look in the rear-view mirror and make decisions, or progressive thinkers who look forward and look at the fork in the road, and they take action before we reach that fork. That's the way this council has been for the umpteenth years. We make decisions that protects our community. And you see, Mr Mayor, the DCP that we've come put forward and which we consulted on has not, it's not ad hoc policy, it's not policy on the run. It's decisions that we've made over a four-year period. We went to consultation, we go into the community, and we got some feedback. And as a young man, Mr Mayor, I watched a blacksmith work on a horseshoe. And what he was doing was putting the horseshoe in the fire, putting it in the water, and then beat it up. He kept doing it progressively over a good few minutes, till I asked him what he was doing. He said, "By doing what I'm doing, I am making the metal strong so that it lasts longer." That's exactly what we've done over this four-year period. We have made this DCP strong. It has been gone, people have gone to court. Councillor Mattson's a very wise man. And you know, it must be hard for him, because he is agreeing, we've heard the story about the canopy. We've heard about, oh, you know, overdevelopment, all these implications. But he is a principled man. He is a leader, because he's doing what's right for the community. Yeah, and that's what leaders have to do, we can't always do what's popular. We've got to do what's right. You know, I heard the word democracy used a few times today. Democracy relies on trust. The system only works, the system only works when the people have confidence in that trust. It works on the basis of doing what is right for the community. Democracy succeeds when we actually achieve things for the betterment of the people and make a positive difference. But if that trust is lost, if that confidence is corroded to the point where people no longer believe in the system, democracy will fail. And other ways of government can perhaps rear their ugly head. The point I'm making, Mr Mayor, is that this, we have gone through the democratic process. We have consulted with the people. We have conclusively made decisions and voted on this matter. We cannot just make ad hoc policy, we cannot make policy in the run. As another councillor Roberts pointed out, when there were talked about deficiency in car spaces, what he said was, there's something called the light rail. A lot of these students will be using the light. Not everyone can afford a car, cars are very expensive, fuel is very expensive. So they certainly have alternative means of transport. The other thing that comes in, oh, we're doing all this for the students, all the, this is a university precinct. Of course we're doing things for the students. That's what Kensington is all about. There are lots of other things as well. But we need to accommodate the students, we need to look after them, because we are building a purpose-built suburb for a purpose. And the university is an integral part of our decision-making process. The racecourse is important, the university is important, the hospital is important. When I was the mayor, those were the three pillars which influenced me to support the light rail. I didn't like the light rail, I didn't support it, I was worried about the trees and the rest. But when I realised these three important institutions needed protection and needed support, I went along with it. So anyway, to address the thousand car spaces, the light rail will do that. We're purposely, purpose-building us homes and accommodation for the students. Now, we're going to be in a lot of trouble, well with Covid and the students not coming back, et cetera, or rethinking where they're going to go. If we don't, yes, one more minute, if we don't do something positive, we might miss out on that opportunity as well. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Bowen.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Councillors, I think my position on this whole K2K proposal is well-known. And nothing I have seen from the inception of the proposal to date has convinced me, other than that it has been a disastrous development for the Kensington community that I know so well, having grown up there. And so councillor, previous speaker, Kensington is not just a university precinct. It's people's homes, people have lived there all their lives. It's a very precious and valuable way of life for the community that lives there. Yes, the university is important, but it is not to the exclusion of everyone else and certainly the community we represent. And that is why it is so important that we support the rescission. Because we've been told, and I heard it again tonight, that we've stopped the rezonings. Well, that's wrong. We haven't stopped the rezonings, we've heard that another one is coming on Anzac Parade in between the Masonic Hall and Lorne Avenue there. So we haven't stopped the rezonings. And one of the things that's so important about this process that we need to now recognise and acknowledge on behalf of our community, is that it was driven by the state government. And that we were told many times that the state government will just proceed with these spot rezonings. And the minister was using the discretion to send the rezoning applications legitimately refused by this council to the planning panel. And we were under pressure and under threat. But of course, what we didn't know then was, and we don't know, and I'm not suggesting that because there's no evidence of it. But we do know, at that time, there was a practice in the state government for commissions and the like to be received by rezoning. We know that because of the ICAC hearings this year in Operation Keppl. And that has resulted in a profound change of the law. And a law that the government has accepted, an amendment to the Independent Commission Against Corruption Amendment, Property Developer Commissions Bill to MPs Bill 2020, which was passed about two weeks ago. So it's fair enough for our community to be very concerned about their council being under pressure for spot rezonings that have not stopped. So it's vitally important we take this process step by step, that we are not rushed by developers, that we are not rushed by a state government that has been found out on this very issue and is being held to account. So councillors, when it comes to the issue of the DCP, which is very late in the piece, the three Westwood councillors are doing the right thing. Because the process has not been, that has brought this about, I believe, has been unfair on our community. And by that I mean the process inflicted on us by the state government. And I, and I heard, I couldn't believe my ears, one of the councillors saying, you know, what a great development light rail is. Let me just say one thing about that. If you want to use that as an excuse, if you want to use that as an excuse for promoting development in Kensington, I've got two words to say to you, three words, sorry. It's too slow, right? It's too slow. It's too slow. The bus is quicker. You've spent $3 billion on this thing, it's too slow. It's too slow.
I'm sorry, no one talk, I'll have to remove you if you speak up again. And councillor Bowen, continue.
And I'll, but, so, so, so people have to use their cars, councillor. It's too slow, $3 billion, it's too slow. It's slower than the tram they removed in 1955, right? It is a joke to suggest that that is some sort of improvement to transport that can justify this uplift without parking. Because the councillor is correct, councillor Steve Rienos is correct. The suburb of community, which is not just a university precinct, as we've been told tonight, right? It's where people live, is going to be swamped by cars. And if you do not impose on these developers a requirement of parking, it's a windfall to their bottom line. They do not have to excavate down the bottom underneath their buildings and create multi-story car parks, which they should, which we would require of a commercial development in the area. Those cars will be on the streets, in amongst the people of Kensington. That reason alone is enough reason for you to support this rescission, that on itself. So even though I'm very reluctant about lending any sort of support to what I regard as a oppressive programme that has been inflicted on us, I will support the rescission.
Thank you. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First off, I'd just like to begin with some praise for the way in which the Westwood councils have actually approached this particular rescission motion in being pragmatic and dropping the request for a further consultation. And the reason why I state that is because I think it is very important that council, at the end of tonight, has a DCP for the K2K area in light of the fact that we have rezoned it. I think it is very important for us to have a development control plan in place in light of the pending legal action, which is currently underfoot. However, I do think it is important that we reasonably actually consider what is the best development control plan, which we as a council can adopt. In light of that, I do actually support this particular rescission motion so that council can, at the end of tonight, have the best DCP in place in order to control the development along the corridor. I am personally unsatisfied with sections of the version which were adopted. However, I do not agree with all of the provisions as proposed by councillor Veitch in her foreshadowed motion. While it is unlikely, in the event that the rescission is successful, but councillor Veitch's foreshadowed motion is unsuccessful and fails, I would just like to foreshadow that I will move a further version of the DCP with the nine-metre laneway from the school and an additional requirement in regards to the minimum requirement, minimum requirements around parking. I'll go into those later on if required. The purpose of just foreshadowing that is so that councillors, in debating the rescission motion, we can simply have before us the question as to whether or not we believe that the DCP as adopted at the previous council meeting was the best version of the document, without being in any way concerned that we would leave tonight without a version of the DCP adopted by the council. So just to clear any fear or concern in regards to that, it is my view that we should have a version of the DCP adopted tonight, in either way. And so I would like to commend the way in which councillor Veitch, Luxford and Stavreinos have dropped the push for a further consultation period. In light of that, I support the rescission motion, and shall leave it at that.
Any further speakers? Hold on, whether to rescind the...
Yeah, I'm just closing, if that's okay, very briefly. Councillors, Westwood councillors have really made every effort not only to take into account and bring forward the concerns of Westwood residents in what has been a marathon, quite frankly, over these last months and weeks. We have literally been emailing, phoning, meeting, we have exchanged so many things and we have tried to arrive at the main issues. We have also taken on the concerns of our city planners, of fellow councillors who were concerned about going to the Land in Environment Court without a DCP in place. Therefore, we have made really every effort to come to a point tonight with a DCP that really, in all honesty, retains many of the things that were exhibited. No one brought, no one actually criticised the DCP when it went on exhibition. No one had a problem with it, well, there were problems with it, but the councillors who are supporting the amended version tonight certainly didn't propose any of those amendments. No one said at the time, these are too onerous, you know, we must be flexible. No one put forward those points. Many things were changed, but we have endeavoured through a great deal of effort to come to a point that we hope that everyone can agree on. It's part of the democratic process. We have tried our best to circulate the foreshadowed or the follow-on motion days in advance. We opened ourselves to, you know, to a conversation, pick up the phone, send an email, we would have been happy to talk to you. We have, in all honesty, tried our very best. We are representing the concerns. You know, these are, in all honesty, the bare minimum of the issues that were brought to us, the absolute bare minimum. We're trying to arrive at a point, and I really would ask councillors, some of whom are just flicking around on whatever, I don't even know if they're listening. Well, I can see, people are flicking on bloody Facebook or whatever. Seriously, I can see with my own eyes. Sorry. No, this is not true.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. And councillor Veitch, can you... Can you just finish and we'll move on?
I'm happy to finish.
Thank you. So councillors, I'll put it that we...
A DCP will be voted on tonight.
That's right. Councillors, so I'll put the decision to rescind the original motion by councillor Mattson and Parker. Councillor, so I'll put the decision to rescind the original motion by councillor Mattson and Parker. So all those in favour of rescinding Yes, straight to a division. All those in favour rescinding the original motion. So go around the room. Councillor Nielsen, councillor Veitch, councillor Sirenos, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Bowen, all those against rescinding the motion. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Shury, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Souza and the mayor. No, I thought, what were the numbers? So I declare that lost. So councillors, I think we'll just have a 10-minute recess. And please be back by half past eight.
When love comes in, oh la la la. Love comes in, oh la la la. When love comes in, oh la la la. Love comes in, oh la la la.
Councillors, I reopen the meeting at eight forty PM. Everyone in? And first we'll do MM thirty slash twenty, Meryl Minutes, the financial support and donations. I've put it to you, as you've read through, Chifley Public School, the principal and the PNC, the president of the PNC asked for a donation of trees, which we've granted, trees and plants and sensory plants for a garden, the kids out there needed a little bit of good luck in their life, Marubra RSL Junior Diggers, we've supported this year after year, waiving the poor higher fees, St John's Marub Rangelin Church, every year asks for a donation for plants, and the Hope Believes Shine Foundation is a new foundation that operates with the deli, and they desperately need support and funds, and we'll be one of the first people to donate to the local foundation. As we all know, they are very important in the delivery of domestic violence services, and they desperately need more councillors, and this money will go towards councillors. And we also planned in the future to make them, we hope to fund them to donate through our Step Out Speak Out in future causes. So councillors, I commend this Meryl Minute to you, can I, all those in favour say aye? Against, declare that carried. So, do we have any urgent business? No, so we go to the...
In Sariatum.
Here we go. So, to start off with, GM eleven slash twenty? No? CP forty-nine slash twenty? CP fifty slash twenty? CP fifty-one slash twenty? CS forty-nine slash twenty? CS fifty slash twenty? CS fifty-one slash twenty? Challenge, councillor Hamilton? CS fifty-two slash twenty? CS fifty-three slash twenty? Councillor Parker? CS fifty-four slash twenty? CS fifty-five slash twenty? Then we move on to CO fifty-five slash twenty? Challenge, councillor Parker? CO fifty-six slash twenty? Oh, sorry, we've... CO fifty-seven slash twenty, sorry. Oh, sorry, I thought you said yes to CO fifty-five slash twenty.
Look, either way, I challenge CS fifty-five, please.
Oh, okay, so not CO fifty-five, okay.
CS fifty-five.
And CS fifty-three slash twenty, yeah? You challenged. CO fifty-seven slash twenty? CO fifty-eight slash twenty? CO fifty-nine slash twenty? CO sixty slash twenty? CO sixty-one slash twenty? Councillor Shuri? The secondaire? Councillor Mattson? Is the secondaire, and councillor Andrews is the mover. So, the first one was CP forty-nine slash twenty, councillor Roberts. Oh, sorry, do I have a vote on the unchallenged items? All those in favour say aye? Against, declare that carried. So, CP forty-nine slash twenty, councillor Roberts.
Yeah, just a question about the background, was this decided to be brought forward out of our experience from the childcare centre, or was this always on the agenda to come up with a policy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, no, it's been in the pipeline for a little while now, there was the original policy adopted by council, and there's been some revisions through the coordination authorities who have updated the model policy, so we've just spent the process of adapting it to be fit for purpose in twenty twenty.
So, you're just asking the question, councillor Roberts, okay, councillor Andrews, you want to move it? And councillor Mattson, the secondaire? Okay, all those in favour? Against, declare that carried.
I just wanted to say I now know more about asbestos than I've ever known before.
Thank you, councillor Shuri. CS fifty-one slash twenty, councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I would like to pass the business paper as per the recommendation, and just wanted to add that I, and I hope others as well, are really excited about the possibilities of opening up our town centres a bit more, I think the Coogee Bay Road initiative, even in its earliest stages, is proving to be extremely popular, I think Clavally Road, the residents around Clavally Road, and those that patronise the shops through the long shopping district that it is, it would really be welcoming any opportunity to have wider footpaths, underground power, all the things that are making Coogee Bay Road between Brook Street and Arden Street such a pleasure to see and be around, so I just commend the council staff, I'm really, as I said, excited to see that they're including so many different zones across the city, and they're making assurances that they're going to continue to explore all the possibilities across the city, so I just encourage the council staff to continue to do this, and hope that everyone's fully supportive of what they've put together on the paper, thank you.
Councillor Ravino, second, all those in favour? Unless you want to speak, councillor Semper.
I notice that the report is received and noted, I'm glad it's come back, and I'm glad that a lot of the initiatives that I put up in the original motion are now being taken on board, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
So, all those in favour say aye? Against, declare that carried. CS fifty-three slash twenty, councillor Parker?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I move an alternate recommendation that council note the report. The reason behind that is that the proposed report firstly recommends, following the release of proposed improvements to bus services in the South East, that council seek the introduction of on-demand bus services within Randwick, rather than seeking a loop bus service. The first point is, council has several existing, quite clear resolutions on the book, one in particular relating to the retention of existing very well patronised bus services and bus routes, another relating to its strong opposition to the privatisation of bus services. I note that on-demand bus services across New South Wales, which have been currently trialled and all other sites, are all run by private operators, and they are often in instances run in places where the previously publicly-run bus service has been withdrawn. In my view, it is inconsistent to have a position advocating for effectively privately-run shuttles, they're not bus services, they're shuttles, no bigger than any of your average club vans operating across our city as a substitute for publicly-run, frequent and well patronised bus services. As such, I cannot support the report as proposed, I think while motivated by good intention, I do not support it as proposed, we've seen how previous resolutions are advocating for what seem to be innocuous transport projects, at the time may have seemed like good ideas, but we're subsequently ruing those decisions many, many years later, I will not name the project, but I'm sure that it is quite clear in the minds of all of the councillors in this particular room, so as such, I do not support the introduction of on-demand privately-run shuttle services across our city, and I would suggest the alternate recommendation acknowledging the work that went into preparing this report.
Councillor Luxford is second.
Yeah, I cannot support the on-demand bus services, we are advocating for a stronger bus service in our city, we are being supportive of the public bus, public transport system, our public buses, so the on-demand bus service is something that is private, they are private shuttles, and we don't want them here in our city.
So, is that a, sorry councillor Parker, is there a motion to...
Very simple, that council note the report.
But the actual report's in favour of the loop bus and the...
Once again, Mr Mayor, noting a report does not involve actioning the report, it simply notes that it has been submitted to the council.
Councillor Sorenos?
So, look, Mr Mayor, I have to laugh, because when you look at the report that's before us tonight, it actually tells you just how good an on-demand bus service is. Look at this, on-demand services have been trialled within a number of Sydney locations, Transdev recently operated a trial on-demand service in Waverley Wallara, Transdev states that they have undertaken two on-demand trials in the Southlandshire and in the Sydney's eastern suburbs, offering passengers flexible minibus transport on-demand. The pilot allowed passengers who lived in areas that were traditionally hard to service by public transport to order a minibus service either by phone, online or via an app, how much easier can you make it? How much easier can you make it? You don't need to wait forty-five minutes or half an hour for a bus, you get it on-demand, as soon as you put it in the app, and it comes, it's delivered, it comes there, and then it says, to go further, the solution included a custom-built website, a purpose-built phone application and ten Mercedes-Benz Sprinter minibuses featuring free wifi, USB charging points, electric doors of privacy class, and they further advise they offer a ten-to-fifteen-minute guaranteed journey time and the opportunity to book between one hour or a month ahead. More than sixty thousand customers used this service during the pilot period with an average star rating of four point eight nine out of five, four point eight nine out of five, that tells me that there's very, very few people who don't like this service, why would we now not receive a note or report like this? No, if we really care about our community, we're going to ask and seek to have this type of service available to us, we're not going to kick it in the teeth, especially at a time now where we want better public transport services in the eastern suburbs, and I don't care if they're private or public, at the end of the day, at a time where people are out of work and out of jobs, this is creating jobs for our community, creating jobs for people, why would we say no to it? You've got to be kidding me, I might be voting for this amendment?
Councillor Roberts? It's a motion, motion.
Look, if it's a motion, then I move an amendment that we adopt the recommendation on the business paper.
The amendment, Mattson, seconded by Hamilton, is that we just... As per business paper, as simple as that, so councillor Andrews on the amendment?
I'll speak on the amendment.
On the amendment now?
I'll speak on the amendment, look, Mr Mayor, I support the amendment, and I just can't believe what I'm hearing from councillor Parker, it seems to me that he has forgotten his councillor cap at home tonight and come straight from Aquari Street into council with the Michael Daly cap on, because, Mr Mayor, we are here to represent our residents and ratepayers, and, Mr Mayor, this motion was brought to council in 2018 by councillor Stavri诺s, who cares, who cares about his community, and this motion...
Councillor Andrews is making aspersions against councillor Parker that have no basis in truth. I understand where he works. I understand that, but you're making aspersion.
Councillor Andrews, councillor Andrews, councillor Andrews, I am calling councillor Shuri's point of order, so please retract it and apologise. We don't need to know this on this night, it has nothing to do with the topic, please, just retract it. You had a point of order? Go ahead. On the subject, please, councillor... Just your, your mic? His microphone? His mic? Mike? You turned it, yeah, thank you. Just for the record. Roberts, do you still want to talk to the amendment?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and if I'd been given the call, I would have moved this exact amendment, so it's an excellent amendment, I was going to move it myself, what councillor Parker is proposing is ideology over services for our community, like, I can't see anything other than that, it's clear that the council can't run a loop service by legislation, can't do it, and we wouldn't do the on-demand, we would ask the state to do it, like, it would be zero cost for council, but extra service choice for our community, like, it's worth supporting the business paper as it's written, because it will provide further transport choice and... further transport choice and diversity for our community. Thank you.
Further speakers on the amendment? So we'll put it, so we're voting on the amendment? Okay, so all those in favour of the amendment, say aye. Those against? Shall I declare that carried? You always have it. Okay, please raise your right hand, all those in favour of the amendment. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Shuri, councillor Nielsen, councillor Steverenos, councillor Singh, councillor Andrews, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Souza. That's why you were the loudest to shout aye, that's why I was wondering. I will go around again, please raise your right hand if you're in favour of the amendment. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Shuri, councillor Steverenos, councillor Singh, councillor Andrews, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Souza. All those against the amendment, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Bowen and the mayor. So I declare that carried? Am I right? Yes, so it's, declare that carried, it's... Foreshadow an amendment? It's carried, it's carried actually, so there's no foreshadowing an amendment. Councillors, councillors, can I just get clarification from the general manager before we all decide to become experts? So the motion's carried? Oh, okay, the amendment becomes the motion, so now we vote on the motion? Okay, go ahead councillor Veach. Councillor Sever... Is seconded? Councillor Luxford is the seconded? Oh, sorry.
Addition of one word, public, is that correct? Yes, I know.
Forget who actually put the motion up.
My question would be, if the amendment was carried and became the motion, and if we are allowing councillor Veach to put forward this amendment, based on the fact that she did say, "I foreshadow an amendment", then this is a foreshadowed amendment, and so how are we, councillor Mattson, debating whether to pull the word "public" back up into the original amendment that's already been carried? So...
Can we slow down? Take the, yeah, amendment councillor Roberts?
Yep, so what we have now is we have a motion before us, put by councillor Mattson, seconded by councillor Veach, and that is that it's as per the business paper, except "public" has been inserted at the start of "on-demand". Okay, so that's the motion that we have before us? I would like to now move an amendment that "public" be deleted, and we move as per the business paper. Thank you councillor Steverenos.
Councillor Severenos is the seconded?
Okay. So... Okay, thank you for letting us know. So, I've got major concern, I move the business paper as, I move the amendment, which is the business paper, and it's in response to the amended business paper where it was just "public", and once again, I oppose the public use of the word "public" on the same basis I said before, and that is simply the choice and diversity. We need to have full options available to us to be able to provide services to our community, that's why it's important that we have full choice on the table, whatever's available, give it a go, so by having "public" puts us into a corner and that is not good for our community.
councillor Severenos is seconded?
Mr Mayor, I can't believe that we need to include the word "public" on the man bus services. Mr Mayor, we've had any number of councillors in this chamber getting up and complaining that the privatisation of buses is a travesty, that the bus services in the eastern suburbs are one of the worst, and here we are now trying to improve on it, and the same people who are complaining about the bus services in the eastern suburbs are the same people who don't want a proper or a better service for the community here. And why? Because it's going to be operated by a private sector operator. What does it matter? At the end of the day, a job's a job, you're employing people, you're going to have people in those buses and you're going to have the community saying, you know what, what a great service this is, five-star service, 4.89 out of 5! I'd like to see the ratings for the, the ratings survey for a public sector service. I could tell you the public sector services, bus services, wouldn't get any sort of a rating like that. And this is a private operator trying to offer a superior service to the eastern suburbs, and yet here we are now, want to play politics. Oh no, can't be a private operator, it has to be a public operator. Really? Is that what it's come down to? Politics? Ain't the private a community of a good service? Why, because it's run by the private sector? This is an absolute joke. It goes to show, in this chamber, people don't care about their community, they'd rather play politics ahead of caring about the community concerns. And I'll leave it at that.
Councillor Parker? Councillor Parker? Councillor Andrews? Councillor Parker? Did you have your hand up before?
I just think it might be for the benefit of the meeting if you could just clarify what we have before us.
What we have before us is an amendment that it goes by, the actual, takes out "public" and it goes back to the actual recommendation from the business paper. No, you'll be speaking on the amendment if you speak now. So I'm going to put it, so I'm putting the amendment as I just described, all those in favour, say aye. Those against?
Definitely one, division, what is on the record, definitely.
Okay, so those in favour of the amendment raise their right hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Steverenos, councillor Andrews, councillor Roberts and councillor De Souza. Oh, sorry, councillor Singh as well? Yep, sorry. Now those against, councillor Shuri, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor De Rocha and the mayor. So I declare that lost. So we go back to putting "public" in the, so back to your original motion with the "public" in there? Okay. Go ahead.
Just speaking quickly to the motion, I note on page 140 that the original intent of the motion by councillor Steverenos and councillor Andrews back in March of 2018 was that a report be brought back on the option of what was a loop bus proposal aimed at reducing traffic and parking congestion. If councillors, the option, the better option available to us is an on-demand system, then yes, that, we should pursue that as, with the intent of reducing traffic and parking congestion. I'm sorry, but I just consider that a publicly-run system would be the most efficient way of targeting a system that could reduce traffic and parking congestion. If we just was, were to surrender it to the private forces, I think the profit motive might undermine us and derive and remove from us the potential mechanism of targeting at areas of high traffic and parking congestion. So I do think that the motion as it stands is probably better suited to fulfil the original intent of the movers of that motion back in March 2018. I congratulate both of them.
Just before, just before I put it, councillor Hamilton, do you want to still be the seconded? Or do you want to, because the word "public" is in there now, that wasn't... It's up there as, that's it? Okay, cool. I know, just saying now Veach is up there, so I'll just put it. So all those in favour of the motion, say aye. Those against? Declare that carried? So we move on to CS55/20. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm moving this report in a slightly amended fashion. All it does, just to be clear, I apologise for having to turn my neck...
It's seconded by councillor Mattson.
Yes, councillor Mattson. It endorses the allocation of $168,000 for Covid marshals and adds the words "and", what, additional qualified traffic control when required. The intention of that is just to clear up some of the drafting in relation to the report, but also just to provide a clear authorisation for additional traffic control measures if required inside of a slightly larger budget allocation. The intention of that is, in the event we all saw the traffic incidents that occurred on the Labour Day long weekend, I do note overall that the substance of this report is broadly quite good, and all moving this particular, moving the report in this particularly amended fashion is just to provide a little bit more leeway for additional traffic control measures if required. Hopefully, it is not required and we're able to save that money, but in the event that it is, it just provides additional discretion to the general manager i-if needed. So in light of that, I commend the report in the amended fashion and hope it receives the support of the council.
councillor Mattson, second?
No, I was aware that the council was planning to move this. I do believe that while it might be regarded as preemptive, I think best to be prepared and ready to go. I anticipate that the general manager may of course have to advise us on some budgetary measures to ensure that the operational result is maintained at some point.
There's no further debate, I'll just put it, all those in favour say aye. Against, declare that carried. Councillor Shuri, CO61/20. The Sydney Coastal Councils?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Seconded by councillor Nielsen?
I haven't told you what I'm putting yet.
I think she, she's always...
I'm the chair of the executive committee of the Sydney Coastal Councils, and it's a job I really enjoy, as I'm passionate about the marine environment. So I'm moving that council determine that I am the delegate on the executive committee of the Sydney Coastal Councils group, and that councillor Nielsen is the delegate for the AGM. And I hope that's okay with everybody. I remember you tried...
So if there's no further debate, can I have all those in favour say aye? Against, declare that carried? Is there any petitions? No? So we move on to NM72/20, notice the motion from councillors Parker and Luxford to investigate outdoor gym facility at Snake Park, so we'll just put it down as count, yep.
Look, thank you, Mr Mayor, I move the motion as outlined on the business paper. The intention of the motion is simply for a report to come back at a later date investigating this particular facility. This has come from a constituent request in relation to that, I await the results of that, I note that outdoor gyms are quite popular facilities all across our city, I've sought the advice of the director of city services who suggested that such a use is not inconsistent with the Snake Park master plan, however, I think that a decision on any future facility is best left to staff, so at that point, I'm happy to await that and commend the motion to the council.
councillor Luxford?
Reserved.
councillor Susan?
Mayor, I would request and ask them the mover and the second if they would accept it. There was a very famous man called Jono Johnson, who did a lot of work for our community, was a former parliamentarian. Jono used to walk his dog there, many, all the time. Not so long, an officer from the council asked me, we've been requested by council to put a seat somewhere where Jono Johnson would be remembered. I said, of course, Jono would practise his faith at Marubra and I worked with him, and be perfect outside the church, and I hope they took that idea, but the local member said, oh, Jono had walked the dog there, put the chair there. I don't think that was really done with, you know, ill-intend or whatever the word is, but the fact is anyway, this gym is going to be built. I was hoping the mover, and he's a good labour man, I'm sure he would support it if we could name that outdoor facility or plaque honouring the great Jono Johnson, who not only did a lot for our community and this area, but also left a legacy which others are following, and I know others who sell those cakes at Christmas time to raise funds. So I hope councillor Parker and councillor Luxford, who both belong to the ALP, will consider my request, and I'm not asking for an amendment, I'm just asking for incorporation so they still control the motion.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I just have a question to the relevant officer, if we could get some advice as to the plausibility of naming something that council has not yet agreed to actually proceed outside of a report, I have no opposition to the suggestion from councillor De Souza, I'm just curious as to how that would reasonably look in the form of a resolution? Or would it be a more appropriate time in order to leave that and any subsequent decision of an outdoor facility?
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor, I can confirm that discussions are in place currently with the family of Jono Johnson for a suitable memorial. If council was to consider a plaque noting Jono Johnson's name at this facility, it may more so be a consideration of the naming of a plaque should it be adopted in a future budget.
But in agreeance with councillor Parker, it's to investigate an outdoor gym is the motion, so first we'd have to find out if the gym's there and then go for a move.
Look, I think in light of that, it would be more appropriate to leave the motion as is in light of the fact that there are ongoing discussions around it. I've no opposition to that, but I think it really should be a matter which is left for the family rather than as a resolution of council, I think that would be more appropriate.
So, all those in favour say aye. Those against, declare that carried. NM74/20, notice the motion from councillor Mattson, Paris climate agreement, Paris climate change agreement.
Thank you.
Do I have a seconded? councillor Shuri?
Thank you. Look, if you've been following the news in the United States, a few days after the recent US election, the United States formally was, was formally out of the Paris Agreement. It didn't take long for President-elect... It didn't take long for President-elect Biden to promise to rejoin the Paris Agreement. This is an historic statement and it is one that allows our government, if it was prepared to take up the opportunity to hit the reset button on climate change. It would be a mechanism, a golden opportunity for the Prime Minister to break through the resistance perhaps within the conservative parties on accepting the reality of climate change and responding more accordingly. The government has, our government has indeed signed the agreement and even has a set of target emissions, emissions targets. These amount to a promise by the Australian Government that we will reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 26 to 28% below 2,005 levels by 230. Look, the simple reality is that there's general agreement around the world that that is inadequate. And if every country was to have a similar reduced contribution, then the global effort to keep climates, to keep global temperatures to just a 2% increase, let alone a 1.5%, would be undermined. We, as a nation, we simply are not carrying our weight. It is obvious to everybody. I would just note that one quote from the Climate Action Tracker Network, they state, they talked about a recent poll, they said that this poll had found that 72% of Australians view the bushfires of November 2019 to January 2020 as a wake-up call on the impacts of climate change, with 73% of the population agreeing that the Prime Minister should lead on climate change action. Now, if we can look at the United States, we can see that President Trump is missing the opportunity to hit the reset button. He's just digging himself into a hole on a whole range of issues. It would be ironic and sad if our own federal government, like him, missed the opportunity to reset this debate, to break through the toxic political responses that have dragged this nation into a humiliating position internationally. It's a golden opportunity and entities around Australia, individuals, organisations, councils should be urging the minister, the Prime Minister to take up that opportunity. I would simply say that councillor Beach has informed me that there's been a call by a number of key organisations in a number of countries for such a rethink. I forget the exact details. But look, councillors, what do we want to go down in history? That we weren't even prepared to take notice of our own media reports? Because they'll all be on file. Schoolkids for decades later, 100 years, will be accessing old media files and seeing that we were warned, that yes, we were seen and that powerful organisations were telling us, look, climate change is here, it's here, earlier than we thought it would. The ground has shifted so much in the last year, councillors, we need to put our own position down in history.
Councillor Shuri, a second up?
I reserve my right, I think councillor Mattson said it very well.
Councillor Ser Venus?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, Mr Mayor, I won't be supporting this motion tonight. I can't believe that the council has brought forward a motion using the President-elect of the United States, who didn't know whether he was running against Donald Trump or George W Bush, and using him as an example, and leading a rebellion against, like leading some sort of cause for, you know, for climate change and rejoining the Paris Climate Change Agreement. Mr Mayor, the Australian federal government are on target to meet the Paris Climate Change Agreement accord. They're on target to reduce our carbon emissions by 28%. I couldn't care less what the Americans are doing or what the President-elect of the United States says. At the end of the day, Australia is Australia. And need I remind the Labor councillors and the Green councillors in this chamber, last year at the federal election, you copped a kick in the pants, all right, because the Liberal Party went to an election with a more sensible and sustainable climate change policy, not a radical left-wing climate change policy like you ran with and you copped it. The blue collar workers who were, who were the traditional Labor Party voters did not vote for you because they could see that their jobs and the economy of Australia were going to be out of whack as a result of the radical climate change policies that were devised by Labor and the Greens. And you copped it. And you know what? You're still dirty at the fact that the Liberal Party won the unwinnable election. At the end of the day, we are the ruling party and the majority of Australians had their say and they said to the Labor Party and the Greens, no. And now you've even got senior members of the Labor Party, Joel Fitzgibbon, a senior member who was supposed to be the Environment Minister, the shadow Environment Minister, getting up and saying, you know what? Your policy is pathetic, we're losing our voter base and we need to get back in touch with our voters. The blue collar workers who were the traditional Labor Party voters. Now, if the Labor Party councillors here tonight are smart, they won't support this motion because you know why they've lost their voter base. But I hope you do support it and I'll tell you why, because you'll remain in opposition for a hell of a lot longer because of your pathetic, radical, left-wing climate change policies. Keep on going, keep on doing it because you'll keep on losing every federal election. And while Morrison's there, he can rub it in your faces.
Councillor Roberts?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. You know, councillor Mattson said there's allegedly resistance to climate, you know, climate, climate change appreciation within the Liberal Party. And I just find that extraordinary language, extraordinary. It was the Liberals who ratified the Paris Climate Change Treaty. We put it into law to, to take action on climate. And the Paris Climate Change Treaty, the critical point of it, it's not about trying to control global temperatures like one degree, one half, like, like who in their right mind think we could actually do that? What can we actually control? We can control our greenhouse gas emissions and we all signed up to reduce them to zero, zero percent, a completely carbon-free economy in the second half of this century. And that's a fantastic outcome for, for the globe and we signed up for it. We are currently acting on climate change and it's responsible and they're, and we're actually going to trans, transfer to zero percent greenhouse gas emissions in our economy in the second half of the century. And I'm not going to apologise for anyone for not putting in some short-term targets that might make you feel good. I'm not going to support that criticism at all because the fact of the matter is, it was a coalition who signed up to a gradual transition to zero greenhouse gas emissions. Australian economy would be done responsibly and sustainably in the second half of the century. And a stepping stone along that way was the 26 to 28% by 2030, which is an absolutely responsible measure to take. Now, I know I don't have, we don't have the numbers, I know this is a stitch up by the Greens and the Labor Party Green apologists will support them and, and this motion will, will obviously pass and, you know, they'll write a letter, you know, we'll write a letter to the Prime Minister, we strongly urge you, Mr President, you know, we strongly urge you, Mr Prime Minister, to, you know, go beyond your Paris Agreement because the US are joining Paris. Like, are you kidding me? You know, but if the Labor Party want to support this, this, this green motion, that's up to them. If they're going to ignore, if they're going to ignore the, the great Labor MP Joel Fitzgibbon about this path that they're taking, that is completely a matter for them. But in the meantime, in the meantime, I've got nothing but respect and congratulations for the coalition government for their responsible action on climate change. And as a globe, I look forward to having zero greenhouse gas emissions in the second half of this century. Hopefully nuclear will be part of it. Thank you.
So councillor Beach, councillor Bowen, councillor De Souza?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I will be supporting this motion. I'm going to read a short quote that came out in the news just a few days ago. "Climate change impacts are already apparent in shifting weather patterns and extreme weather events. Global science tells us that we need to limit global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius to avoid the worst of these effects. And we have aligned our goal to decarbonise our business to this aim." Councillors, this quote was not from the Greens, wasn't from some radical left-wing group, was from a company that uses the colour green. This is a quote from Woolworths dated November the 11th. "Retail giant Woolworths has committed to power all of its operations, more than two terawatt hours worth of demand, with 100% renewable electricity within just five years, as it becomes the largest single Australian energy user to join the global RE100 initiative." They commit to retail, this group will be using 100% green electricity by 2025 with net positive carbon emissions by 2050. Councillors, when I heard this announcement, I actually felt very proud that Randwick Council, a humble little local council, had joined with many other councillors, councils to commit to a climate emergency, to, to recognise the reality of that climate change, what it is doing to our environment, what it is doing to our communities. We are the council that is stepping out on the front foot and big companies like Woolworths are following in our steps. Councillors, this is doable, we know the writing is on the wall, we know that 50% of the Barrier Reef has gone. In recent years, we have seen mass fish deaths, we have seen the images of the ice melting in the Arctic and Antarctic. We know this is the direction we are heading, we are doing the right thing and that is only confirmed by large retail companies such as Woolworths, putting their money where their mouth is. We all shop there, well, a lot of us do, and this is the future. Let's get on with it, we can do this and I commend this motion.
Councillor Bowen?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, look, I'm, I'm happy to support this, this motion because it's actually quite reasonable, which is, might sound strange given some of the hysteria that we've heard this evening from the, the Trump cheer squad, who, who are disappointed, no doubt, and perhaps their Prime Minister, their, their boy. A former deputy Prime Minister once said to me, the public are never wrong. Well, the public in the US are not wrong, they voted for Joe Biden and he said he's going to support the Paris Agreement. I couldn't believe it last Sunday, I was down on Maruba Beach and someone had gone to the trouble of writing in the sky, Trump 2020. I thought, not only do they, not only, not only do they not get a vote, because it's a, an American election, of course, but they also don't seem to know that, that the man who never loses lost. And there's been plenty in the Liberal Party who just, just can't accept it, they can't handle it.
The council is imputing a certain presidential candidate and I supported or didn't support. So I think that's.
I actually accept your point of order, councillor Bowen, councillor Bowen, just, I.
But, and we had the former treasurer, the ambassador no less, suggesting there'd been a fraud. I mean, it's been embarrassing having to listen to this, to all these sore losers because of, of the result of the American election. So I would suggest councillors, rather than focus on what's going on in the US, focus on what's happening here. We just had a horrific summer, last summer of bushfires. Everyone knows that climate change is happening and we need to get on and do something about it. And the, the significant issue about the American election is that Australia is in danger of being out of step. All right? And that's all that this motion does. This council has a great record on, you know, acting progressively in regards to the environment and I see this as just another episode of, of that long, proud history.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor De Souza?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be supporting this motion and proudly put my name to it. To me, my name is very important, Mr Mayor, and I, because I cannot have another in my life, because I cannot lie about this and sign myself to lies. I heard it's a stitch up. Well, I'm proud to be part of that stitch up. Okay? But let me say a bit more about councillor Mattson. Councillor Mattson has shown leadership on environmental issues. The Franklin River today would be dammed if not for people like councillor Mattson protesting. The Barrier Reef, as we were told, would have been mined or threatened. Kakadu would have become the epicentre of uranium mining. Our ice caps would be melting at an exponential rate as the temperature of our planet and the CO2 levels increased. Tornadoes, bushfires, we know it all. Climate change is real friends and this is the most urgent of times and the most urgent of challenges. We as a community have to address this challenge with honesty and courage. This should no longer be a political debate, but a human debate because climate change threatens our very existence. So I will be supporting this and I thank councillor Mattson for once again bringing to our attention a motion which addresses a very, very important human concern. Thank you, councillor Mattson.
So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour say aye. Against? Declare that carried. So NM 75 slash 20, notice of motion? There's no need for a division. NM 75 slash 20, notice of motion from, cable, please, can you please raise your right hand, all those in favour? Councillor Shuri, councillor Nielsen, councillor Beach, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Andrews, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor De Rocha and councillor De Souza and the mayor, all those against, councillor Hamilton, councillor Ser Venus, councillor Singh and councillor Roberts. Declare that lost, carried, carried. So it's the word of the day, stitch up. NM 75 slash 20, notice of motion from councillor Shuri, notice, but notice board for the Clavelli Precinct Committee and seconded by councillor Nielsen.
Okay, I'm not going to speak for very long about this, but the precinct committees do have difficulty in getting members, new members, aware of their very existence. And Maruba Beach did wait 20 years for their notice board, but it's actually been extremely well used and the precinct committee also put up notices of council events and, and things like that on it. So all I'm doing is to investigate, working with the precinct committee because they have been talking about where, possibilities of where that notice board might be and I would appreciate councillors to go with that.
Councillor Nielsen?
Yes, both councillor Shuri and I attended via Zoom the last Clavelli precinct meeting and there are some new members and they're very enthusiastic and they're building up a good, strong following. And this is a way of them increasing the knowledge and awareness of precinct committees and I think it's a very, very worthy idea and I hope you all support it.
I think your argument was quite good, so I'll just put it, so all those in favour say aye. Against, declare that carried. So now we enter into closed session. Who do we need? Closed session, so we need to. 20, explains the relation to maintenance of DRL. 20, explained installation of maintenance of DRL driver mover? Councillor? I don't think it should. Okay, moved by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Luxford. Is there any debate?